Let's start the joint meeting of the commission and city council. Mr. Mayor, is the capital in order?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
You're gonna have to separate those guys.
Why little pass notes?
Yeah, I think we're looking at SP twenty-two dot oh oh one one three notch brewery expansion. Who's the, who's the Rainy? Are you starting it up?
Evening, Karen Rainey, City Planner with Neighborhood Development Services. Scott Roth, the three-notch brewery has requested a special use permit for five twenty-two Second Street Southeast to expand the existing brewery from fifteen thousand barrels per year of production up to thirty thousand barrels per year of production, which is our small brewery use category. The applicant has confirmed that no physical changes are currently proposed in order to support the expansion. The narrative notes that currently thirteen tractor trailers visit the site weekly to both pick up products for distribution and also deliver raw materials. However, many of the tractor trailers are underutilized unless the applicant estimates only six additional tractor trailers will be needed to access the site as a result of the increase in production. Smaller trucks are currently utilized daily to pick up spent grain, and this will continue if additional production is permitted. The traffic engineer has confirmed that he does not have any concerns with the increase in traffic created by the expanded expanding brewery production. The proposed development will necessarily result in some increased demand on physical facilities and services provided. The assistant fire marshal has confirmed that there are no concerns with potential impacts due to the brewery expansion. The preliminary view of the proposal indicates the city's existing water and sewer facilities are generally adequate generally adequate to serve the proposed development. However, the additional biological oxygen demand generated by the brewery expansion may require modification to the facilities on the subject property to address additional impacts to sanitary sewer treatment facilities. You'll find later on that SAP has recommended a condition to be placed on the SUP should it be approved to ensure facilities are upgraded as necessary to address the additional impacts. The twenty twenty-one comprehensive plan, future land use map designates the subject property as urban mixed-use node. All adjacent properties with the exception of Crescent Halls are also designated urban mixed-use node. Crescent Halls is designated as higher intensity residential. The comprehensive plan describes the urban mixed-use node designation as urban mixed-use districts that support community housing, employment, and commercial development. The plan recommends a mix of uses in the same building, which are encouraged are encouraged in up to ten stories in height. The higher intensity residential designation is recommended to provide opportunities for higher density, multifamily focused development. That leaves the brewery expansion aligned with the urban mixed-use node category and will not have an adverse impact on the adjacent higher intensity residential area. The proposed brewery expansion also aligns with several goals of the twenty twenty-one comprehensive plan, which speaks to a desire to promote economic variety and the growth of existing businesses, particularly within areas designated for mixed use in the future land use map. This includes the future land use map playing objective to ensure long-term economic sustainability of the city by planning for a wide variety of commercial land use types as well as the objective for mixed-use areas to include facilitating economic activity in this city and ensuring the availability of sites for incremental business growth and expansion. This also includes strategy one point two, the sub-strategy which is facilitate economic activity in existing and new areas of mixed-use opportunity as identified in the updated feature land use map and ensure the availability of sites for business growth and expansion. The proposal also aligns with goal two of the Economic Prosperity and Opportunity Chapter, which is to generate, recruit, and retain successful businesses and jobs, as well as strategy four point four to encourage the development of the city's key commercial corridors and surrounding sites, including current commercial corridors and mixed-use corridors and nodes as identified on the future land use map. In addition to strategy four point five, partner with internal and external stakeholders to implement the strategic area investment plan. The proposal aligns with the strategic investment area plan, SIA plan, which proposes Second Street Southeast as a retail corridor and encourages incremental change to meet the goals of the plan. The proposal specifically aligns with the priority action items, one, to encourage local serving retailers to locate in the SIA, and two, to increase opportunities for jobs located in the SIA. Steph finds the proposed brewery expansion will further several goals of the twenty twenty-one comprehensive plan, as well as the twenty thirteen strategic investment area plan, aligned with the future land use map and will not create an adverse impact to the community. Steph recommends the planning commission recommend the application for approval with the following condition. Number one, no expanded brewery production beyond fifteen thousand barrels per year is permitted on the subject property until A, the utilities department confirms existing sanitary sewer facilities can adequately handle the increased biological oxygen demand generated by the expansion in brewery production, or B, facilities on the subject property are upgraded to address the increased biological oxygen demand, and the utilities department confirms the upgraded facilities will adequately handle the increased demand. I'm happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Roth, our applicant, is also available to answer questions as well.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell, do you wanna share something?
Yes, the quick disclosure. I've already shared this with the secretary and the chair. I have a small stake in Champion, and I'm one of the board of directors. Champion may be considered a competitor of Three Notch, but I think I'm able to deliberate without bias and fairly.
Thanks. Do you have questions for Steph? Mr. Mitchell, do you have questions for Steph on this?
Oh, yeah, no.
Thank you very much. Mr. D'Arancia?
I have no questions.
Ms. Russell?
I have a question in our pre-meeting, and I think it'd just be helpful for the public to understand or clarification on what the bio- biological oxygen demand is.
Sure. So biological oxygen demand is a water quality parameter which refers to the amount of oxygen required by organisms to break down organic matter in the treated water. So basically breweries are one of the uses that may put in additional elements into our sanitary sewer treatment facilities that require additional oxygen to break down in our utilities. Our utilities department is currently doing testing to confirm whether there's adequacy at our facilities to handle that or if additional measures are needed.
Thanks. No other questions?
Ms. Schwartz?
No.
Ms. Stolzemberg?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer, anything on this?
Nope.
Thank you. I have no questions. Very clear. Thank you.
Sure.
Let's hear from the applicant.
Good evening, everyone. I don't think I can say it much better than she just did, but no, we're just excited for the opportunity to expand. We won't go to thirty thousand barrels anytime soon, but we're getting close to that threshold of fifteen thousand, which was always kind of a talking point for us.
Please identify yourself for the public.
What's that?
Please identify yourself for the-
Oh, I'm sorry. Scott Roth, the president and founder of Three Notched.
Thank you.
Yeah. So when we, when we took over the X property, that was part of our original discussion about potentially getting to this threshold, and this has kind of been on our radar for the last couple of years, and it's time to, you know, potentially make the jump because hopefully we'll exceed that number sometime next year.
Right. Questions for the applicant, Mr. Mitchell?
Nope.
Mr. D'Arancia?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Russell?
No.
Mr. Schwartz?
No.
Ms. Stolzemberg?
I have one question, maybe two questions. I'll start with the first. So I was, I noticed yesterday you guys have a new alcoholic or non-alcoholic beer. Is that counted in this total production amount?
It would be for now. We're going to be moving most of the production of that product down to our new facility in Nellisford, so that won't factor into the equation next year necessarily, but for now it is.
Okay, fair. The other question I asked, because one of our standard to review is odor. Of course, adverse effective odor. When you guys are brewing, there's certainly like a distinct kind of malty smell, a must-have around there. Is, you know, whether it's a bad smell, I guess, is kind of up to the smeller. Is like a filter to like, like an odor filter, like a normal thing or that like breweries when they get bigger, definitely install, or is that like an onerous thing or expensive thing to do?
I have never heard of anybody installing that. I will say that the odor will not become more concentrated or stronger in any capacity. We can only brew twenty barrels of beer at a time, so it's really just the frequency with which we would be brewing that would increase. So there's not going to be any more potency to it than what is currently experienced, if that makes sense. So that would be, I think, my only comment around that. I don't, I don't know that there'd be a great way to mitigate the, the wart smell, which I happen to like. But.
I do, too. Met some people who jumped, and I've never stopped them from drinking the beer.
Yeah.
Thanks. No more questions.
Okay.
Mr. Palmer? I don't have any questions. Thank you. The council, I see that you are here. Mr. Payne, do you have questions for the staff or the applicant?
No.
Um, speaks there.
No, sounds like a good project.
There's no-
No questions for me.
Mr. Wade?
No, sir.
I should have asked apologies. As for me, very clear. Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
I would like to-
Oh, 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 sorry.
Please hear from the public at this time.
Great. It's, it's time for a public hearing. We'll do as we do with our speaking. We'll ask for any speakers within the physical audience to go first, and then we'll go to our virtual audience and alternate back and forth as we go. Each speaker has three minutes to speak. I will ask our, in the room, if we have anyone who's interested in speaking. Right? We don't see anyone at this time, and our virtual audience, we have a hand raised. Ms. Robin Huffman, you are able to speak.
So I have two questions for the brewery. The first one is, I understood like a while back that if there's a drought, that the beer making doesn't really cause a strain on the water count of, or the reservoir or whatever. And I'm wondering if that's still true. And secondly, there is a hemp filter that goes in these green, whatever they're called. I don't even know what they're called. You know, where they, they actually manufacture hemp products like CBD, and one of them is at the Shenandoah facility in Elkton, if you want to find out about it, but the town also had a problem with that smell, and they were able to use this technology that doesn't allow any of the odor to go into the public. So you might want to look at that.
Thank you.
All right, I'll just check again if any physical, anyone physically here? No. Do we have any virtual speakers? If so, please raise your hand virtually. All right, Chair, we don't seem to have any more speakers.
Thank you very much. Deliberations, if we could, starting with Mr. Mitchell.
What's the motion? What you want to talk about?
Looking around the room. Nothing significant. I would like to have a-
The motion would be, I move to recommend approval of application SP two-two dash zero 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 one one with the conditions, condition one dot A and one dot B. I'll have on page thirteen of the staff report.
I will second with an amendment to one A, one and two.
What did I say?
A and B.
Oh, well.
You know what I meant, yeah. Discussion on this motion.
I'd just say congratulations on your success and expansion. Thank you.
I would add appreciation for keeping your business in the city and, you know, not moving to the county and other state.
This is a big part of that. Thank you. Except for all that I just heard about Nellisford. Totally different animal.
Got a vote.
Ms. Chris, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. D'Arancia?
Aye.
Mr. Stolzemberg?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Aye.
And Mr. Soli?
Yes. Good luck in your future pursuits. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Six sixteen. We're on fire. I'd like to turn to the two fifty bypass, fresh public hearing. Who's speaking with us on this?
Mr. O'Connell.
Mr. O'Connell, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dan O'Connell. I'm a city planner with NDS, and tonight I'll be presenting an application submitted by Scott Hendricks, who is senior project manager for the Charlottesville Public Works for a special use permit to allow for a new city fire station. The subject property, I believe the technical address is three forty-five US two fifty bypass. For this request, this property is owned by the city of Charlottesville, and it includes McIntyre Park, the Brooks Family YMCA, and the existing city fire station number one. The applicant is proposing to construct a new eight thousand square foot station to the south of the existing fire station on the same parcel. Subject property co-locates several park and amenity spaces, including McIntyre Park, Vietnam Memorial, Greenleaf Park, the YMCA, and McIntyre Little League ballfields, and the Charlottesville skate park. Surrounding parcels are developed with single-family residential uses as well as two public schools. The subject property is currently zoned R one, single-family residential. Under the R one zoning classification, municipal offices or other government buildings are permitted only with a special use permit. The current fire station number one is, we believe, illegal non-conforming use, as it was constructed with no special use permit on file for the site. The comprehensive plan's future land use map designates the subject property for open spaces and parks. Open spaces and parks are specified to include both public and private spaces, but no density form or use restrictions are specified. After review, staff finds that the proposed use is consistent with the future land use map and harmonious with the existing patterns of use within the neighborhood. The proposed redevelopment addresses several of the twenty twenty-one comprehensive plan's goals regarding efficient planning for public infrastructure and improving city fire and emergency medical services. The proposed new fire station will be a LEED certified building with improved accommodations and workplace safety provisions for city fire department and EMS personnel. The facility will permit the growth and expansion of the city's emergency response services and can accommodate both firefighting and EMS services from a single facility. The proposed additional use would result in a reduction of public open space within the city. However, the wooded area proposed for the development is not utilized for any active or passive recreational uses, and construction of the new station would not interfere with the new by trails connecting Charlottesville High School to the YMCA and the Greater Ravanna Trail system. So staff recommends that the request for a fire station could be approved with one condition, and the condition is that prior to site plan approval, the existing stub road accessing the property shall be vacated from the city right of way. This was something that came up in our review. It's sort of a minor administrative thing, but just question of setbacks for the site. The current design is compliant with required setbacks for R one zoning, but just to make sure that's clear in the future, we would ask that the, the stub road, which is currently part of the right of way, just is deeded out and just becomes regular city property. But with that, I'll be happy to take any questions. The applicant is here as well, and also a critical slope waiver has been requested for the site as well, so I can present that, too.
Now, Mr. Mitchell, questions for the applicant?
What's going to happen to the existing fire station?
For now, it will remain in use to provide firefighting services. To date, I don't think it has been decided exactly on what the building will be used for after the new station is completed. The applicant might be able to speak further on that, if there's been a decision on that.
How we, if you know, that'd be helpful. The, I think you've answered the question that I had about the stub road. So that's going to continue to exist and still going to be city property. It's still going to be maintained by the city, and that's still going to be used as an entrance and exit for the fire department. The, the applicant, in the applicant's application, section one dot five, the application is written in September, on September fifteenth. It suggests that the design team is going to continue work with the city to mitigate the loss of trees. Has any more work been done on that since back in September? Do we, have we moved? Has it evolved? Do we know more about saving more trees? Or should I ask?
I don't think any more work has been submitted on that, other than what's been provided in the application.
So when do we, when do we reap the benefit of that additional thinking?
Well, there will be landscaping requirements as part of site plan review, so if this use permit is approved, they would have to submit a final site plan to the city, and I believe that would come back to the planning commission for approval as well.
Mr. D'Arancia, questions for Steph?
No, sir.
What's up?
The staff report mentioned a community meeting. Can you summarize if any changes or, you know, anything, anything came up? You summarized that there were some questions, but did anything significant come from that conversation?
No, I don't think any changes were made to the plan. The public seemed supportive, those who were in attendance, and it was mostly questions about removal of trees, any impacts to the parks or the trail systems. Removal of trees, any impacts to the parks or the trail systems. And, um, LEED certification, how green the building would be.
No questions.
No questions.
Hey, Mr. Schwartz?
No.
Mr. Stoltenberg?
Uh, yeah, so, um. Well, I find this whole process very strange because we're asking ourselves per permission to do things, um. Uh, pretending, I guess, that the applicant is, uh, not going to do whatever they more or less want because they are us. Uh, I have concerns about the stub road condition. Um, at the moment, council is, uh. At an impasse, uh, agonizing over, uh, any vacation of any. Uh, road or right of way of their kind, uh, with no clear end date in sight, um, so. If we have it as a condition and are not able to do it for various reasons, or it's delayed or whatever. Uh, that holds up this whole, like, redevelopment, right? Um, but if we don't have it as a condition. The applicant, who is the city, uh, can still do it if we, the city, feel like it's a good thing to do, uh.
Site plan wouldn't be compliant with the code though.
Oh, so it would.
It's a setback concern, that's, that's why it was.
Oh, so when you say this, it's compliant setback wise, that's only two two fifty and not to the stub road.
Well, to our review, our knowledge, it is compliant regardless of of what the stub road is or is not, um. It was mostly just a kind of a question of. You know, removing this legal technicality that could cause a problem in the future, this is not meant to hold it up at all.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I'm all for like, the general concept of vacating it, that seems fine to me. Um, I'm just worried about adding it as a condition, just in case. They can't figure out right of way vacations in the next, possibly two years, um.
Yeah, the condition is, is kind of like a housekeeping measure, it's not, it should not impact the zoning compliance of the property.
Okay, so if we don't make it a condition, you'll still nudge them to do it when they submit stuff?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I got.
Mr. Palmer, do you have thoughts on this one?
Um, just a clarification from my understanding, you mentioned EMS would be, uh, run out of there as well as fired. Does that in any way consolidate what's down the road on McIntyre Road, or is this?
I'm not sure on that, but the applicant might be able to speak better on that.
Nothing for me, uh, my understanding is the parks, uh, is is good with this.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Fine, you. Uh, Mr. Payne?
Um, I guess the only question, the obvious one, just how many? Do you know how many trees are planned to be disturbed, or how much of McIntyre Park are planned to be disturbed in order to pursue this new design?
I think the limits of disturbance was around point eight acres, so a little less than one acre.
This makes sense.
Yeah, I didn't realize we were in a process of agonizing over. Does remind me that.
Oh, I've watched. You mean it's agonizing or agonizing?
Okay. Um, yeah, I, no, I didn't. Sorry, um, great presentation, great project, and we funded it, looking forward to seeing it happen, so I don't have any further.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Uh, if it'll help Mr. Stoltenberg at all, the counselor who is most agonizing over this issue will not be agonizing over it further. Um, I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
As we funded it already in the capital improvement program, so obviously we want to make sure that the, the site works and all the rest of that stuff, but we, we need it done.
Mr. Wade? No comment. Thank you, can we please hear from the, oh, Mr. Pinkson, please?
I'm sorry, is the critical slopes piece part of this or just separate? And is that a separate presentation?
Separate vote in a separate conversation.
Thank you.
Oh, I believe it's the same conversation.
You have to do them together, but there would be two votes.
We have to have two votes.
Yes, my understanding is this is the conversation, so if you have a question for us.
Well, we haven't had a critical slope presentation.
Is that true?
It's true.
Mr. O'Connell is prepared to do it now or later, whatever you all.
I'll put it right now.
Alrighty then. So in order to accommodate, to accommodate the proposed fire station, the applicant is proposing to disturb critical slopes as defined in our critical slope ordinance. Uh, the fire department wishes to keep the existing fire station in operation until its replacement is completed. So the new building will be located to the south of the existing intersection along the bypass and encroaching into nearby critical slopes. Nearby critical slopes run parallel to the two fifty bypass and around the existing stub road and fire station as depicted in the map in your staff reports. In evaluating their waiver request, city staff is in general agreement with the applicant's justification for waiver approval under finding number two. Uh, critical slopes surround the subject property along nearly its entire front edge with the two fifty bypass. This unbroken critical slope area makes additional access to the property via the bypass or existing stub road impossible without causing some disturbance. The existing fire station number one will be kept in service until the replacement building is completed. Requiring the existing station to be demolished and replaced to avoid the critical slope area would unreasonably restrict the use of the property for providing public firefighting service. Constructing the new station, uh, further to the east would require additional land disturbance and tree removals to extend the access roadway and cross an existing drainage area. The proposed location south of the existing station allows for a compact, one-story design that reuses existing parking and road areas, minimizing tree removal and impervious construction. Uh, regarding negative impacts to consider, development of the site will result in some loss to the existing mature tree canopy. However, the proposed fire station has been designed to minimize onsite land disturbance and will not negatively impact the adjacent public trails. Alternative building sites on the subject property would involve additional land disturbance, tree removals, and trail closures or relocations. And staff have no recommendation, recommended conditions for this waiver request.
Uh, Mr. Mitchell, questions for staff?
Um, where we operating, it'll be the, um, oh, way of reviewing critical slopes, I probably would. Um. But, uh, no.
Mr. Drancy?
Yes, sir.
No.
Mr. Schwartz?
No.
Mr. Stoltenberg?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
I have none. Mr. Payne? Mr. Pinkson?
No.
Mayor Stuck?
No.
Mr. Wade? Very clear, thank you. Can we please hear from the applicant? Please address both issues if you will.
Good evening, I'm Scott Hendricks for the city of Charlottesville, Senior Project Manager, uh, glad to be here, talk about this important project. Uh, to Mr. Palmer's question, uh, about the tree canopy, uh, we have had a survey done of all the trees, uh, their size, their caliber, their species. Uh, we're evaluating that information now, we're working with the city's arborist to try to come up with a solution to help mitigate the loss. And there are going to be some requirements that we'll have anyway, through statute and code to replace, uh. Trees as much as we can, we understand the issue, we understand the issue. But any other? Questions or? I do have, uh, a team with me, uh, remotely, our architecture team here is, uh, here and they're, uh, ready to make a presentation. Alright, Keith, are you there?
I am there, can I, I'm here, can everybody hear me?
Yes, yes, sir, you're there everywhere.
Alright, well, thank you, everybody, uh, like Scott said, I am Keith Driscoll with Hughes Group Architects, uh, we've been working with the city over the last couple of years. Uh, to generate the plan, um. Let's see, is the presentation that I sent, Danan, is that what's on the screen, I can't quite, there we go.
Alright, um, this is all the material that was presented to the community. Um, and was included in the information that you received with the, with the two applications, so I'll just run through it quickly, so everybody has an understanding. Of, uh, what is being proposed, you can go to the next slide, please. Uh, this is the site plan, uh, on the top edge of the sheet, you can see the existing fire station. Uh, to the south on the bottom edge of the sheet is the proposed new station. Um, we looked at a number of options, uh, when we started working with the city and the department, uh, to figure out what needed to be done. Um, first of all, the existing station does not meet the fire department's needs on a number of fronts, uh, primarily. The equipment that needs to run out of the station no longer fits. And, uh, a lot of the amenities and features within the station do not adequately protect, uh, the firefighters and EMS. From hazardous materials and carcinogens that are associated with the fire apparatus. Um, so something new and something different needed to be done, uh, we looked at options to renovate and expand the existing station. Um, as well as options to create a new station, ultimately. For a number of reasons, uh, primarily, uh, creating a better layout and more functional space. And cost reasons, uh, a new station was determined to be the most effective, uh, use of, uh, city funds. Um, this location, uh, keeping it generally in the same location, deploying out onto Route two fifty as the current station does. Uh, was what was recommended in the two thousand sixteen Fire Station Location, uh, Needs Assessment. Um, and so that was very advantageous to the department. And that one, this does not introduce new impacts to the surrounding community. And two, it maintains the current level of service and response times that the, the station can provide. Um, as was mentioned earlier, we looked at a number of options for locations to put the new station, uh, including, uh. To the, uh, to the east, um, and behind the existing station, uh, ultimately, it was determined. That this one-story station that's proposed, uh, would be the most functional for the fire department. And it resulted in the smallest impact to the existing wooded area. Uh, was mentioned before, we are looking at, uh, annexing the stub road, um, the, the limits of the stub road are, and the grading and the paving are all remaining the same. Uh, it's just a matter of administratively pulling that into the park property. That is it? There are any questions?
Mr. Mitchell, can you start us? Mr. Duranzio?
I can't.
Ms. Russell?
I was interested in Mr. Mitchell's question about the intended use for the, um. Uh, existing fire station, if any, I didn't realize how old it was, it's nineteen fifties, has Jeff Warner weighed in on anything about this resource?
It's a, uh, it's about nineteen sixty-two is, is when it was constructed, um, it's, it's currently not designated with any historical, historical designation. Um, the fire department is probably not going to have use for it, we have a request to the city management now to, to make a determination as to whether the building needs to come down or will it be repurposed. Um, but it probably doesn't have a future in the fire department.
I mean, it'd be great to find some use for a building that exists and is seemingly in. Okay, condition.
Okay, okay, condition, yeah. Kind of, kind of generous, there's asbestos, there's a lot of materials in there, it's, it's, again, it's nineteen sixty-two construction, it, it was designed and built. You know, probably for a forty or fifty year lifespan and is well exceeded there.
Any? What's that? Mr. Schwartz? Mr. Stoltenberg?
Uh, I have, uh, one question about the, uh, the vehicular access kind of around the back. Um, so it looks like there's a path now that goes down to like an asphalt path that goes through the park. Um, and then it, it shows up being rerouted, uh, but I think, does it only go to the bioretention facility and then stops?
It does, it's for bioretention maintenance, so devices require. Periodic maintenance and you need available equipment down there, so it's not a paved road or anything, it's just degraded. Seated, grassroots.
Gotcha, and so if, um, is the current one also for bioretention, or is that just?
Current.
The current, uh, vehicular path that goes. Down the bottom of the hill.
That's more a hiking path, I believe.
Yeah. And so, yeah, I guess the question was going to be like, can we get the, that hiking path, I guess now, uh, or, or this. Maintenance road driveway to the bioretention to kind of connect up to the trail. Um, but to preserve its use, I guess, as a, the path that is now. Which I think is just like, you know, dirt, right? Um, but also potentially think about paving it. Um, I ask because we've kind of been like slowly iteratively building the shared use path down to fifty. Um, and right now, I think it ends at Meadowbrook Heights, um, and it'll probably keep going a little while longer, but at some point it hits. The bridge and that's going to be a hard thing to do, so if you can cut back to some paths back there, get up to the YMCA. And then, you know, maybe you complete the path network that way.
Right, there is asphalt path in place now, um, on the other side of the station. Um, and, and the station's actually going to have walking connection to that.
Okay.
The station's also going to have, uh, a public restroom in the front of the building, uh, in a kind of a secure location where people can't get into the building, but they can come in and use the restroom right off the trail. And we think that's an amenity that, that people would like and, and we think that, that it's. The way that the trail transverses past now and up past the YMCA kind of accomplishes what I think we were suggesting.
Okay, perfect, yeah, that's, uh, exactly what I was thinking, while you're in there, you might as well do it.
Right.
Great, great, here you've already thought about it.
We're going to have a fitness center, uh, for the men and women to work out, um, as, and, and the trails are another part of their fitness regimen, right, so. These, these folks need to be in good shape and they, they support this connection to the trails.
Awesome, and that will, will that be a paved path down there?
It's existing a paved path.
Uh, that actually gets up to the station's level.
The new part we put in will be concrete with steps coming up.
Awesome, cool.
Yep.
Thanks.
Sure.
Mr. Palmer?
Well, I had asked that question about, does this facility, will this be taking a, the EMS stuff that's at the McIntyre Road?
Good question, this is.
Or is this a separate kind of?
It's designed to do that, and, and it's designed to have EMS features built into it, like the pharmaceutical closet. And freezers and things like that, that's required. Um, will that be there on, on day one, we don't know, but we're building a facility that will last fifty years and be in service for fifty years. And during that time, we expect the EMS will run out of there at some point.
The only other thing I have that I didn't hear, and you know, it's not really. Way out of my place here, but, uh, just because I have heard it with the YMCA after it was built about. Bird strikes and stuff on the big glass wall, I don't know how, I didn't quite see how much curtain wall you had. On the back of the facility, but you know, that's been a problem at the YMCA and just as you go through the design process. Don't skip on those, uh, mitigation. Things that are out there to, you know, reduce bird strike.
Good point, yeah, we actually haven't considered that too much, so thank you for that.
What is that?
Beg your pardon?
What, what is that?
Birds, hit birds, it's hitting, replying at windows.
Yeah, nice.
Yeah. Not a labor action. Get him to work.
Mr. Payne, please. Mr. Pinkson?
Um, no. No questions.
Mr. Wade?
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to hear from the public on this issue.
Alright. Um, so first, we will, um, ask those in our physical audience for speakers and then, um, we'll ask our virtual audience. And our virtual audience, if you're interested in speaking, please do raise your hand virtually. Um, we'll begin with our in-person audience, uh, three minutes to speak, um, yes, sir, come on up. Please state your name for the record.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Planning Commission, staff, uh, haven't done this for a long time, but I am the Fire Chief, uh, from twenty oh five to twenty fifteen. Lived in and out of the station for thirty-seven years, so can, just want to come here to reaffirm, it sounds like you are all on board about making this happen. But I didn't want to take any chances, because this was being discussed back when I was in the fire department. Uh, the firefighters, one, deserve this for the role that they play, twenty-four hours in the station. Uh, it has, uh, I think originally a working, uh, bomb shelter. That has been, uh, mired with mold issues in the station. Uh, the station is much very complex and small for the increasing number of staff. And as you all have already heard, the location of the station is something we've looked at over the years repeatedly. To show that the response time from the stations is critical to, to the service we provide as far as life-saving. But it's also critical for our insurance purposes and is, is part of the reason why we have an ISO class one. So I just wanted to come here and reinforce the need for the station and urge you all to help pass this forward and get it done. So thank you all for what you've done so far, thanks.
Are you Chief Charles, uh, Charles Warner?
I am. I'm sorry, I forgot to say that, Charles Warner, Fire Chief, two thousand five to twenty fifty.
Alright, um, our first virtual speaker will be Sam Guiland, Sam, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, Sam, uh, go ahead.
Okay, great, yeah, thanks for the opportunity to speak, um, I support the fire station. And, and measures to give the fire department the resources they need, and, and I think this building looks awesome. Um, I actually wanted to bring up a relevant section from state code. Uh, the code of Virginia requires that new public facilities, roads, schools, fire stations. Must be approved by the planning commission as being substantially in accord with the adopted comprehensive plan before they are authorized. I don't think a comp plan review has been completed for this fire station, so I would just add. So I would just ask that any motion to approve the SUP. Also include the determination that this fire station is substantially in accord. With the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one comprehensive plan. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Alright, do we have any other speakers in the room? Okay, virtual speaker, Miss Robin Huffman. Miss Huffman?
Uh, yes, I'm a registered nurse and I understand very much how needed right now, especially. We need the EMT services through the fire department. And paramedics and especially the medical. Aspect of their facility needs to be really state of the art. But I do have a question, like since I've moved here, the two fifty bypass. Has been burdened with. You know, different traffic. They've been trying to do the turnabout. On at sixty-four intersection and things like that. It just seems to me that the traffic there is really cumbersome. And I'm wondering what kind of signaling? Or something where the fire trucks can come out without any problem. I'm just wondering if that's a part of the plan. Thank you.
Do you want me to speak to that?
No, that's not, please.
Alright, uh. No speakers in house. Any additional speakers virtual? Alright, Chair, no more speakers.
Thank you very much. I'll close this public chair. Thoughts, questions, deliberations? I would also entertain a motion if. I'd like to consider SUP. And I've heard an idea about substantial performance. Actually, uh, this crazy, can you confirm is is that the information accurate?
That is a, that is a requirement and. You know, we've been working on this project for a long time and I can't remember if we have done that in the past. I know we have mentioned of it. In our comprehensive plan, so there won't be any sort of concern. I think that it would be okay if we, if you all choose to include that in the motion. And then we will verify that that is appropriate enough. And then if we need to take other action, we would come back and do that.
You guys think we should be concerned that making our firefighters more vulnerable to bomb attacks? No shelter?
They would have the mold first.
At least while it'll still be available. You can run across the stub road.
It's interesting, just as a sidebar. We have several buildings in our portfolio that have that feature. From when they were built. And none of it shows up on any drawings. They're just there.
Including City Hall.
Yeah, City Hall, Circuit Court Building.
Where Michael's made his office. I guess on a more serious note, well, I guess. One comment maybe for you guys. If you would think about, I don't know if you have ready. On those stairs from the path, just incorporating bike runnels. So if a firefighter was commuting to work via bike or scooter or whatever. They could get up to the level of the entrance.
Great idea. Thank you.
And then. I guess I would, I would make a motion. And I would. Alright. I move to recommend approval of this application for a special use permit in the R one zone at three, four, five. US two fifty bypass to permit a municipal city fire station. That's it. Okay. Went on, but I I think we shouldn't include the condition just to give maximum flexibility. For timelines on everything. The condition about vacating the thing. Not saying they shouldn't vacate the road, but. That doesn't sure necessarily make a condition of approval of the site plan.
Just, Miss Creasy, can I still vacate the road if we don't demand it?
Oh, yes. I mean, it still can go through the process to make that happen properly.
End of the day, this is us. Alright. I'll second the motion.
I hear a second discussion on this item. Miss Creasy, would you please call the roll?
Sure, Mister Schwartz.
Yes.
Mister Duranzia.
Aye.
Mister Stolzenberg.
Aye.
Mister Mitchell.
Yep.
Mister Russell.
Aye.
And Mister Soli.
Aye.
I would like to turn to the.
We need two votes.
Me too.
At least two votes. We have the critical.
To turn to the critical slips. Let's get an on item or also in a kind of.
It seems like the slope rule manmade dealing with the road, so.
Both findings, one or two are appropriate?
Why don't you make a motion?
Alright, I'll leave it to you. I move to recommend approval of the critical slope waiver for tax map and parcel four, five, zero, 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 one, zero, zero, zero. As requested with no reservations or conditions based on findings that finding one. The public benefits of allowing the disturbance outweigh the benefits afforded by the existing undisturbed critical slope. Per section three, four, eleven, twenty, B six, D one. Finding and finding two, due to unusual physical conditions or the existing development of the property. Compliance with the city's critical slope regulations would prohibit or unreasonably restrict the user development of the property. Per section three, four, eleven, twenty, B six, D two.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I hear a second. Discussion on this item. Miss Creasy, would you please call the roll?
Uh, Mister Schwartz.
Yes.
Mister Duranzia.
Aye.
Mister Stolzenberg.
Aye.
Mister Mitchell. Mister Russell, aye. And Mister Soli.
Aye. Finally. Do we want to consider?
That the fire station would be substantially in accordance with the comprehensive plan.
I feel like it's in the staff report.
Yeah, the staff wasn't just it, it is.
Is, does that require a motion?
So typically, when there's a new facility. Like the gentleman said, he's 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 spot on. There is a code that that notes that that is taken into account. So it is taken into account and the analysis that was put forward. I think we may have done it before, but I can't remember. And so it will not hurt one bit. If you all are okay with moving forward with it being in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan. For providing that vote, we will do some research on the back end, make sure that we covered all bases there. And if we have to come back with something. Different, we will make sure to make that happen.
I have a motion.
Please take the motion.
I move that the proposed US two fifty bypass fire station located on US two fifty. General character, location and extent of the proposed public facility. Is substantially in accord with the city's adopted twenty twenty-one comprehensive plan.
Do I hear a second?
Sure.
I hear a second. Discussion on this item. Miss Creasy, would you please call the roll?
Mister Schwartz.
Yes.
Mister Duranzia.
Aye.
Mister Stolzenberg.
Aye.
Mister Mitchell.
Yes.
Mister Russell?
Yes.
And Mister Soli.
Aye. Good work. You got a bonus vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I would now like to turn to aesthetics. Counsel, if you wish to stay and talk about aesthetics, you're more than welcome. If you'd like to talk about, I don't know, the sciences or mathematics, that's totally acceptable. Thank you very much.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Mister Warner in the room somewhere.
It would happen this quick. So, yeah. Yeah.
Mister Warner, do we have you?
Maybe he's walking over.
If we finish the meeting before he gets here.
Last time we kept them to midnight and then.
Should we have a brief recess to give them some time to? Probably get here.
Or skip to the next slide.
Let's take a short recess for now. Logistics.
I'd rather do the next side first. Good evening. I I I know most of you, I think. I'm Jeff Warner, I'm the city's historic preservation and design planner. And. Do you have, just like, cause I had like music with the first slide, I think. And I'll say this right front, don't, don't read the slides. They're primarily to kind of help me going. I don't like text in slides and presentations, but it's some of what I've had to use. So. Yes, there's things to see, but it's not for you to read. And so, yeah, and I'm here to talk to you tonight about the city's entrance corridors. And primarily your role, which is as the entrance corridor review board or the ERB. And I'll say often, I'll say EC instead of entrance corridor. So you follow me along. Like I said, I have some slides. Mostly notes to help me. Please don't read them, so.
That's the next slide.
That's right. Okay, you are the city's entrance corridor review board. A responsibility that was given to you by city council in two thousand and three. Within the city, there are several areas designated and designated by the city as. Design control overlay districts and these include the city designated historic districts. Which are under the purview of the Board of Architectural Review or BAR. And I I stress city designated because there are historic districts which are not city designated. The BAR does not have purview over those. And then. There are the entrance corridor. So the map, you can see, I tried to put both on there. It's a lot going on. And of course, the entrance corridors, which are under the purview of you all, the ERB. And so the the BAR. And the ERB review process are similar, but they're different. For an entrance corridor project, staff has a lot more flexibility for administrative reviews. And which is why you all only see me a couple of times a year. And. Beep beep beep, you should be. A couple of slides. One more. Yeah, so so, so stay there. What's that?
Can we interrupt you?
No, 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 I I'm only allowed to speak. I can't interest. Yes, you can. Would you like to ask me a question?
No, I don't.
Okay, maybe other people do. So, so in average year, you all. Yeah, sorry, sorry. I'm a little brother again. Never matter, doesn't matter. In an average year, you all will formally review maybe four or five requests. And that includes special use permits, compliance plans. And then the design review and certificate of appropriateness for design review. And you can see, this is one you can look at. In contrast. On a monthly basis, the the ER, the BAR, we review probably six to eight projects on a month. So I'm very busy with the BAR. I'm not so busy with you all. Again, why you don't see me too often.
Are those unique projects or the BAR reviews the same product three times? So you're cutting it three times?
So. Hold that, okay? Otherwise, I'm gonna run over. And she's not, and she's gonna hit you with a laser pointer. So that's a good question. So I I work with the BAR very directly. You all can ask Carl all about it. And I work with them very, very regularly from the inception of a project. And often through a series of design review meetings and then towards the ultimate approval, the COA. And I'm here tonight because I so infrequently work with you all that. And we have some things coming up in the entrance corridor that. So Missy and James and I figured it was time to introduce you, reintroduce you to me and and kind of give you a. EC one oh one. So, next slide. There you go. So, don't read that one. Again, council established the twelve entrance corridors. Made the planning commission, the entrance corridor review board. Per code. The EC projects are reviewed for architectural design, form, style, materials, site design. And it's done through the application of the EC, the entrance corridor design guidelines. And. The ERB's purview applies only to the exterior of a building and only to what can be seen from the entrance corridor. So different from the BAR, you're really just, what is that, what you're seeing from that road that's designated as an entrance corridor? Next slide, please. So design guidelines. Here, and that's what I had sent out a note to you all. If anybody wants a copy of it, they are online. Design guidelines are anchored in ten design principles. Not every guideline is applicable to every situation. So that requires from you all a bit of flexibility in how and to what extent. Those guidelines were applied. And these are the ten principles. And then, of course, the guidelines then stem from those. Next slide. So the design guidelines has five chapters. An introduction, there's a chapter on the streetscape, a chapter on site, a chapter on buildings. And there's a chapter that summarizes each corridor. Yes, sir. So, next. Next slide. And the last chapter is what where things get into the specific corridors. There's recommendations for each corridor. And next slide, please. So you can see the twelve there. Next. And then there's like for the recommendation for that specific corridor. However, with the EC guidelines adopted in two thousand and eleven, the corridor specific recommendations are somewhat out of sync. With the current comp plan and even with current zoning. However, and next two slides. Stop. The the guidelines are still germane and useful, being anchored in good design and which is still important, of course, in twenty twenty-two. So before getting into the how the guidelines are applied, I would. What?
What year?
What year for what?
Twenty twenty-three.
I see, I was supposed to talk to you in December, so you get an extra month out of this.
Thank you. Good talks.
So before we, I'll go back, which is still important, twenty twenty-three. So before getting into how the guidelines are applied, I wanted to walk you through the four scenarios that. In which they're applied to four. So first is, next one is the stack administrative design review. And as I mentioned, the most EC project request can be reviewed administratively by me. Yes, sir.
Okay.
He's counting.
So don't even look at us.
Yep, terrible, terrible. You've said your one, you've got three more.
Now, I've now just totally lost myself. Okay, as I mentioned, most EC projects and requests can be reviewed by staff and, uh, and if someone disagrees with me, obviously it can be appealed up to you all. I I often tell applicants, we can work it out, or you can, um, you can go ask the ERB. Next slide. And so this is a good example of where in staff. This came to me, oh, gosh, what, a couple of years ago, uh, this is the Kentucky Fried Chicken on Twenty-nine North. They they came in and wanted, I said, no, we're not putting a a box of chicken on Route Two, you know, on the entrance corridor. You can do better than this. And it had one version, even a bigger head of the Colonel. So after, it was only a couple of weeks and we went back forth and I I asked them to tone it down, they were great to work with. And, um, you can't really see because it's underneath the screen, but the result was a I think something you would all say is a little bit better than a, I franchise design. And, um, so typically, the ERB, you all will only review what are new buildings. So if it's a facade alteration in Berwick Road, I can take care of it, or it's a the alteration of a KFC, I'll I'll look at it. Next slide. We also administratively review signs in the entrance corridor. And this is a sign for the Raising Canes on Emmett Street. You'll notice on the the right-hand side, it's it shows, that's the illustration of a sign at night. One of the things we don't, we control is light and glare. Another is that if it has red in it, and in the evening, we don't want to see a red glow from the sign, so then that's the type of thing that I can take care of administratively. The other thing that, um, then requires you all is when there's a request for a comprehensive science plan. So, um, for example, for Berwick Road Shopping Center, large shopping centers. Most recently, you looked at something for, uh, the medical building on Tenth and East High. And, uh, those result in you all reviewing it and making a recommendation to city council. Uh, next slide. So, things can be relatively simple, but they can also be extremely complex. And I know, uh, some of you remember the the comp science plan for Hillsdale Place, which actually will be coming back to you, uh, sometime soon. The, uh, next, please. Next, please. And so, the other thing that you guys look at and review are special use permit requests within the entrance corridor. And that's, uh, where you review it. Is there a recommendation to council? Do you feel that the there will be an adverse impact on the corridor? Can that impact be addressed with design view, et cetera, et cetera? But it's not an action on your part, it's a it's a recommendation that you and also the planning commission send up to, um, to council. Next slide. And so it could be as simple as looking at a drive-through window at a at a Chick-fil-A. Next slide, or it could be, you know, evaluating additional height. For example, two thousand and five JP, JPA. Next slide. And then finally, the 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 big thing that you're involved in, though, that you do the least of with me is the design review of new buildings. And so you go ahead and flick, and so, uh, you did look at this, um, uh, Chick-fil-A in Berwick Road Shopping Center. You all get the, to make the decision on this, approving the COA, there's a certificate of appropriateness. Applicants or anyone actually can appeal those decisions to city council. So that's the next step up for those. You've looked at things that are relatively simple like this. Next slide. You've also, um, if you recall, were involved in the apartment, uh, component of the the dairy central projects, the part back on, uh, West Street. And, you know, not only looking at the elevations and drawings, but go ahead. There's wall sections, materials, next slide, and you all even look, reviewed the landscaping plan and the lighting plan. So it was, um, probably as close to a BAR review that you all would be, uh, be involved with. And then, um, so, back to the EC review process itself. And applying what are guidelines from two thousand and eleven to a comp plan approved in in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, next slide. Don't need to read it, but there are, um, during your review, you all have to make some judgment calls on on corridor-specific recommendations. But overall, the guidelines are very flexible. In fact, they're they're extremely broad and flexible. And they're not, and their guidelines are only, they're not, um, requirements. There's not a a a check the box yes or no. So you will have to give some thought to it, which will get to your question at the end a little bit. And so, there's enough, and you flick to the next one, you know, just like anything, there's broad direction about lighting. For example, it doesn't specifically say there what lighting means, but I will work with applicants, as we've done with the BAR. On levels of lamping from LEDs. So, because I'm, we are allowed to prevent unwanted glare, we have some measures that we apply. We have in signage, again, it's, what exactly does that mean? Well, you know, I can interpret, do not obstruct architectural elements. So, okay, if somebody doesn't like it, we can send it up to you all. You also, next, we talk about the, uh, facade organization of buildings, uh, materials, colors. Things are important regardless of of how a site is used or the density of it. So the point being is the guidelines allow you a tool, even if the the comp plan and the zoning has changed. And, you know, uh, another thing, as I showed you, the, um, the guidelines address franchise development. They talk about, the next, yeah, here's good, any, you know, to, um, next one, please. And then talk about mechanical equipment being screened. So again, these are flexible guidelines that we can use regardless of what what the underlying zoning says. So there's pieces of this that are you know, we can still use and still make use, well, we will still use and make use of. So it's with chapter six of the guidelines, and remember, that was the corridor-specific recommendations that I think, you know, we're going to have to work together on. And some of you saw that with two thousand and five JPA, where there's some unclear, well, the language hasn't the same as what the comp plan and and the future zoning are saying. As you know, since two thousand and eleven, the comp plan's been updated, the ordinance has changed, uh, we are, have some ordinance changes pending. Have to have some discussions about that, and we ultimately have to update, um, the design guidelines. But where we are now, with what we have now, I really want to have to rely on you all to to work together to 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 interpret as best we can. You know, the documents that we have applying to current zoning, applying to current comp plan. And then, so pulling this all together. Next, next. Next. So, you have, um, maybe next month, um, I'm hoping, uh, a look at the two thousand and five JPA. I know the Hillsdale Place, uh, it's that's being modified, actually relatively simply, but, um, still something that would come to you. I know James and Missy have been working with you all on what's coming with the, uh, the zoning ordinance changes and how we address entrance corridors in those. And of course, as I said, the the updating of the design guidelines. The, um, so that's a very quick summary. Um, I hope it made sense. It's okay if it didn't. Because you can ask me questions. So again, just reintroducing myself. Want to know, uh, if you all have any questions about entrance corridors, about the entrance corridor guidelines, about the process, you can ask me tonight, you can come into my office, we sit down and go through it. With that, I I I wrote, thank you for your time and for your service to the city. And do you have any questions?
A question, a question about JP, hey, is that gonna be a nightmare? That's gonna be real challenging. Council has approved the number of units and pretty much approved the massive of that already through the S U P. So how do we? You know the problem, it's gonna be big, it's gonna be massive. How do we, how do we wrestle with the BAR concerned about aesthetics when we know that the aesthetics are going to be difficult for a lot of people?
So, it's, it's, um, we're right about that. That, um, height has been established. So what you're working within is that height, and does this design as presented comply with the guidelines? And it it's, um, I mean, it's it's art, it's it's architecture, it's subjective, it it, that's the truth. But to the best of the, your ability, work, you know, go through, where does it fit, where it doesn't? And to Rory's question, the the BAR, so yes, six to eight projects a month. When, for example, the courts expansion, I don't know how many, four or five times it came. Now, it wasn't the same project every time, and so, or it was another element of it. So each time it goes to the BAR, requires a staff report, an update and a review. So I don't, I mean, unless someone just has deferred something, it doesn't change it. I don't get to just reprint everything and hand it out again. And my relationship with the BAR very, very different from you all. I talk to BAR members very regularly. We, um, there's, the design review is much more of a of a discussion. And Carl, you could certainly, you know, your perspective on it is be helpful, it's it's just, it's a, um, if I have a question about something, I will send it out to the BAR. Historically, if I had a question in an entrance corridor, I can only ask you all in a meeting. And that's, it's, it's, I'm often telling the BAR, I'm not asking you to vote on something, I just give me a little bit of guidance. And what I even have, like next Tuesday evening, I'm gonna be bringing some things to them and saying, kind of not sure how to is this, do we have enough here? You know, before someone writes me a check, we, you know, come in here, you know, are we going in the right direction? And, um, because I have said to people, don't bother submitting that, or don't, you know. So with you all, um, as far as it's traditionally been, once I have a project, once there is a design, I bring it to you. And the architecture for a Chick-fil-A, you know, very different from a a tall building on West Main, but, um, how you all choose to treat, for example, JPA, two thousand and five JPA when it comes. I've seen the design, I think it's it's something you all could act on if you want, but there may be questions. You may have to, you know, say, what about this, what about that? That's up to you all. I can't tell you what to do.
What about dictating step backs, you know, as we go up? Is that a function of the planning commission and council? Is that a function of the, uh, EC?
Well, you know, again, there's, um, there's what the special use permit dictates, and you know, so you won't, you can't violate that, so to speak. But if you all make a judgment, your if an applicant thinks you've done it wrong, they can appeal to council. So there's a remedy. You 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 all, I mean, you want to do the best you can, but there is a, is there's a resolution if someone disagrees with your your decision. So, um, we can use the guidelines to, you know, think a step back is necessary, or think something needs to be adjusted, or additional landscaping, but what we do with BAR when we have these conversations, we're really, we're, we're being very upfront with the applicant. You know, we're, we're, we, because sometimes we have to communicate things. And without taking an action, ask them to maybe go back and reevaluate something. So there has to be a dialogue during the meeting. It can't be, here's my design, and the applicant sits down and there has to be some give and take. So, I I can't really tell you what to do until we're looking at it. Hypotheticals are very difficult in architecture.
Mr. Ron, this is a rare opportunity to extract, uh, design wisdom from a professional. I strongly recommend you take it.
Something else to consider as well is, and I I I know I said this during the S U P review. I will tell people, it it, what what happens inside that building, and whether it's one thousand little apartments or one giant apartment, where it's a block of concrete, is irrelevant. It's what we're evaluating is design and what you say. And so, we do BAR, we'll get, people come in and say, why are you allowing this? And the BAR is not allowing that taller building or or more density, their their evaluated design. So when we get going on to, and I, there are others that are going to come in. You all have to kind of set aside that what's this being used for? The assumption is that use has been allowed, uh, that density's been allowed, and you're evaluating the design, the materials, the landscaping, the lighting. Is that appropriate, or is it anywhere USA?
So the, um, BAR is focused on historic preservation.
Yes, no.
Yeah, but they're also focused on design.
Right.
Design is a big thing. So is the planning commission the right place to be thinking about design?
So, we talked about this the other day. So fortunately, you guys right now have have a couple of design professionals on your
Right now.
So, right. You should see Rory's stuff. And yes, the BAR is more, um, we're heavy on architects. But I could have a quorum with, um, business owners and a private, uh, you know, owner of the district and two historians and not have any, um, I mean, the fact that Carl's an architect is a bonus, but we could actually have a quorum without any design professionals there. So i- i- there's a yes and no to that. I would say, um, the difference between the BAR and you all is my frequency with which I work with them. And, you know, quite honestly, the sort of informality with which I work with them and the number of times I work with them versus how we work with you all. And I think that my job, I know that my job is to help you all. I don't put something in your lap and go just, you know, I don't know. I mean, I try to guide you as best I can. Does that help?
That was a good non-answer. With this since my first duty. It's like, are we, am I, um, a sociology major, the right guy to be, you know, what's pretty?
A question from the material that you gave us in our packet. There's a item, um, I don't know where it starts, but on page, uh, four of just packets, uh, page ninety-one of our PDF. On very top is that the express intent of the city council enacting provisions of this subsection that matters related to public health and safety, as may be, as may be defined by the planning commission, shall prevail over issues within the purview of the ERB. Is that, that seems to very much imply that council, at least when they enacted the entrance corridors, wanted the planning commission to review this. And wanted us to look at public health and safety, which is not something that the It it doesn't, but it's it's very clearly in our ordinance. I know he did, and I'm just, I'm probably was sitting in our ordinance that Jeff provided to us.
So, often, you know, when I brought things to you all, um, the first question is, why are you here? Why are you asking us? And so, sort of to be, in government speak, my answer is, because that's your job and that's what I've been told to do. And and, but in truth, that is what you've been charged with. And until until we are otherwise told differently, that's the process we have. And so, part of, part of why I'm here this evening is, I know very well that there's things that are gonna be revised and amended and changed. But in the interim, I have requests that are coming in that have to go to you all. And all we have available are the tools we have available. And, um, I I think that good decisions can be made with these. Um, I don't think it's something, I don't think you all can evaluate an extensive project in twenty minutes in one evening and make a vote on it. But that's okay. Uh, that, that, I'm okay with that with the BAR. Very candidly, I just haven't worked with you all enough, and I don't know what you're thinking. I can generally guess where the BAR is gonna go on something. You all, I I honestly have no idea. And so it's, it's, but that's what we've got. And so I would say, um, one of the things to to going forward is to say, just, we've got these guidelines, you know, what do they say, what do they mean? I'm familiar with them. You'll find them very redundant, you'll find them extremely broad. And when, um, and I think while you do a really good job at the meetings of saying, what do you think? What if you get that input and then you make decisions? We have BAR meetings where sometimes certain members don't even speak, but they vote on it. So you 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 just gonna have, we'll have to work together. Um, and then, as far as updating the plan and updating updating the ordinance relative to the entrance corridor. And we'll have to have that conversation at some point in time and offer what input I can. But with these couple of projects coming up, I said, this is what we got. Yes, sir.
See, I remember there's something in the CIP for updating the BAR guidelines.
So, correct.
Is this something that can be tied to that?
Well, I have. So, per our ordinance, every five years, the guidelines, the design guidelines are supposed to be updated or revised. Now, that could be nothing more than, well, we changed the font, you know, um, but two, and we had the same and we had the same problem with the P A R and, but what you have with the guidelines for the store conservation districts, for the three neighborhoods, that's some very precise neighborhood stuff. The A D C districts, which is the, the, the big book. And then you all have yours, but before we go out and revise those guidelines, we want to make sure that the comp plan and the ordinance is sort of intact. And, and, and some of the discussion I've heard is, well, should the B A R be reviewing entrance corridor stuff? Possibly. I mean, I have some thoughts on that, but I, so.
That's for the twenty-fourth.
That's right. So I think it's, there's no need to spend money revising those guidelines. If, for example, entrance corridors change or, or something changes, so let's, let's. And I, they said, I think we can make things work in the interim.
Before the twenty-fourth, can we, you know, clarification on that? Um, that paragraph that I read, it's item uh, C three under uh, section thirty-four, three oh nine.
I help you, Dick.
Yeah, like are, so are we reviewing entrance corridor uh, items? Um, with an eye towards public health and safety?
Well, everything, enabling legislation is, is, you know, everything has to be anchored in health, safety and welfare. I mean, so I, you pick any section of the code, that's where it starts with. So um, no, you weren't, I don't, I'm not aware of any thing in the guidelines that talks about, you know, uh, bus stops and, you know, people, you know, crossing guards, things like that. So, but that, that's just a pretty basic health, safety, welfare, pretty standard in the ordinance. You are evaluating aesthetics. The reason you are evaluating aesthetics and design is, you know, because of the health, safety and welfare of the community. Yeah, ask the general assembly.
I, I kind of read that, and I, I'm sort of paused just on that. I, I kind of read that as being, you know, planning commission, you can't be forced down into a box canyon on an issue of the E R B. If in fact, it's, it's interfering with the principle of the basic. You know, stop talking about aesthetics. If you're talking about health and safety, stop. And, and that, what that trumps all else. That's the way I read it.
I think that makes sense.
Our ordinance.
It might be, but they just wanted to make it clear that, look, if this is, this is turning into a a substantive disaster, even though it's aesthetically beautiful, you know, stop and say it's a substantive disaster.
The fact that you have zoning in the state of Virginia is in, in order to protect the health, safety and welfare. So that's a, a, I got, it's the preamble at the beginning of every section.
Mr. Dranzio, questions on this?
Well, I mean, despite the advice from my learned chair, I'm going to squander this opportunity. But I'm sure that further, that further information will be forthcoming, whether I ask questions or not.
Relative to further information about.
Mr. Dranzio is a new planning commissioner and is not a trained architect.
I'm having a hard time hearing everybody. Sorry.
Mr. Dranzio is not a trained architect, is not a member of the B A R and is new planning commissioner. So I'm concerned that he is.
It, it's fine. We should, you know, I want to chat through this. The um, um, I just meant in a sense of additional information, there are things that are coming from Missy and James. I'm not necessarily planning on speaking to you all again until we come forward with something specific on some of the projects that are referred to. So uh, but that said, I'm more than happy to have a conversation anytime you all want.
Let's just making sure I'm properly trained.
I believe you have valuable insights.
Yeah, we turned Rory in architect. You're gonna find.
Yeah, I, I don't see why we should be holding up. Solzenberg is an example.
So um, Jeb, I think your example of, of like big box retailers is a really great example of the entrance corridors working well. Like, when I go somewhere and I can tell that there, there are entrance quarter, entrance, you know, design guidelines in place, I go, wow, this place cares. This place cares about their, um, there's some place the, that um, they not, they don't just let a big box retailer come in and run their logo all over everything. And I think that um, indicates, you know, a place that cares about its image and it's how it um, presents itself to its community and to others. So I don't think that's a big imposition, you know? I think that's something that they can be, that, you know, asked to do. Um, I also think it's a little bit. We talk about um, elements of the comp plan, uh, uh, you, you know, new, new, new buildings and um, new things being compatible with elements of, of existing neighborhoods. And so we on the planning commission don't know what, you know, those things are. I don't think we're doing, I think we're being a little bit flippant in um, saying, well, we're not, we're not designers. We don't know, because then we're not really responding to the community saying, well, we care about our neighborhood. So, so I do think it's important that we have um, you know, some awareness of, of design and that being not just aesthetics, but materiality and um, you know, things that are unique to Charlottesville. Uh, and I think the entrance quarter guidelines do a really good job of, of not requiring someone to necessarily be a trained arch- architect to go, well, does this do that? Yes, no. Um, so um, you know, also understanding how infrequently you do come to us. I think it's like not that much of an imposition on, on the planning commission to review these things.
That's a good point, and I, you know, not to be flippant, you, perfect statement. I mean, none of us are land use attorneys or, or I'm not a civil engineer, I'm not even an architect. Um, uh, so, but you're representing an interest in the community and, 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 you know, applying. You're not just being asked, what do you think of this? You, you do have a lens through which to view something and to evaluate it. So um, I think the, the tension is on things like J P A where we have a prior document that said something and, and so, but I think we have to, again, that, that's, that's been litigated. We have a special use permit, which is determine the height and the use. And now we're reviewing the design, not talking about not allowing this. Um, so. And I'm glad you said, you said about the entrance corridor, because it's one of those things I was thinking about, like, all right, what works? And I would, I, I would say, you know, when you go into Fredericksburg on, on Route, Route twenty, I think. Um, you know, yes, they have strip malls, but there's something very different about that. Um, and uh, you know, signage, lighting, trees, there are things that when you're successful, my son always says, you know, success hides things. And um, and, and so, you know, when you're a team that's winning, you know, it hides your weaknesses. Well, you know, we are, we are succeeding in things and people are starting paying attention to it, because it's, it's. It's been successful, right? But, you know, not to pick on U V A, but go over there and look at those lights at the tennis courts and it's blinding. Um, we, through the B A R, have come up with some reasonable guidelines that we've used. You all asked us, uh, the B A R several years ago about glass, had a really good conversation about what does clear glass mean? So, you know.
And then that is maybe some of that health, safety, welfare stuff. Um, you know, lighting and, and glare and things like that.
Have there any, been any actions by the E C R B that have been what you or we or the general public would consider big failures? I can certainly think of some from the B A R.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, certainly. I think it's, um, you know, this is again where, you know, um, and we talk about those a lot. Um, we um, yes and no. I mean, I, I sometimes, okay, for example, the, the Wawa that's down on Fifth Street, um, it's hard to get excited architecturally about um, a store that's already gone in five years. All serious, I asked, when the Chick-fil-A came through several years ago, I asked Carl, I said, how do I, how would I describe this architecturally? We actually had a good conversation about his, um, so it, it, but I would, it's difficult, but at the same time, the result is positive. The um, in the Wawa, they wanted to put like a, you know, big shed roof. And I said, no, we don't have shed roofs. That's not typical. You did a, a hip roof out on uh, two fifty. I'd like to see that here. I had some trouble with the fake Chippendale railing uh, at the top. But I knew that they have to, we don't want to look at the mechanical unit, so, so I can live with that. Um, so there's, there's some give and take, but I don't know if there's, I think more than anything, it's where we missed something and it's happened or you, I mean, just keep working through it.
We won't blame the uh, raising canes uh, drive-through on.
Yeah, that was the FISA explanation.
So the Wawa is an interesting thing or interesting point too, right? Because um, I know at the county A R B, which is their E C R B, uh, they have agonized uh, over that Wawa. Uh, or over their various Wawas. Um, and they came up with a Wawa that I guess uh, maybe we, to use the, the nomenclature, uh, reflects the Charlottesville sense of place. Um, should we be like coordinating our entrance corridor guidelines and maybe even review with the way that the county does entrance corridors? I mean, they're the same corridors, right?
Yeah, and I, Martin and I have been friends a long, long time. I, you know, we talk, I, I mean, they are to a certain extent coordinated. They're certainly not at odds. Um, but like one of the big questions, you know, is, you know, it, what's the pedestrian experience? It's a wall. But in fact, you know, the, the, the design guidelines say, you know, there are areas of the city that are intended to be auto-oriented. This is, this is strip commercial. It, it, we acknowledge that. So it's not trying to make it, you know, uh, downtown Charlottesville. Um, but what I try to do is I look at um, wood materials, you know, and you're not coming in with vinyl siding or fakes. You try use stone and, and masonry and metal and, and try to build some permanence at least into something. Um, so, not something that in five years is going to deteriorate and look like heck. That's, that's sort of my first threshold. You also try to look at what's there, how will this fit into what's there? Although with the comp plan changes, it's hard to say, you know, what's there now isn't the model. So um, but I, I could go through some of, if it would help you all to maybe explore some of the things that have been evaluated and, and kind of a, I mean, we haven't had that many things. A lot of stuffs, I mean, Brant Road Shopping Center's been here since, what, the seventies? Why we have a down mall, down mall, because they built that and everything started moving to it. So.
Yeah, I mean, it's just like the last big thing was Gallery Court, which doesn't exist yet, but, or maybe Dairy Central.
Uh, well, for you all, it was Dairy Central, Earl Ten Oak, which has gone away. Who knows, it may come back. Um, Hillsdale Place, which will probably be coming back modified. Um, the medical building down here on East High. So that's about it. And the Wawa, of course, naturally.
Mr. Palmer, aesthetics.
I need to rename this quiz to Pickleball. It doesn't affect.
Well, thank you.
At least none of you asked me about cutting trees down on the mall, so you know, that's the other thing.
Um, I, I've been very concerned uh, about conflicts within, you know, city ordinances, city, city plans um, for ever, since we began, since we started doing government. Um, and I see many conflicts within, you know, the existing guidelines for, 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 for the E R B. Um, the E C R B.
Um, I don't know why they didn't put the C in there, but it's E R B.
It is E R B.
It's not E C R B.
This is all very confusing.
Accidents, that's how we keep you all in the dark. That's what planners do.
So, you know, I, I, I understand the, the need for some updates, uh, some moderation, some reasonableness. Um, I don't know how or when it will do that, but I, I do see the need.
So the conflict is really, as I said, it knows those, those corridor-specific recommendations where it says, you know, this really should be max three to five stories. The current comp plan isn't there. But the prior chapters that discuss, you know, what a building should be and, you know, what, how to, you know, the site could be designed and activated, those are still applicable. You're just going to have to, where we come to something that seems there's a conflict. We're going to acknowledge it and we're going to refer to the current comp plan and the current ordinance and apply them to the best of your ability.
There a reason for the guidelines to duplicate things that are going to be in the ordinance anyway? Like I.
There's nothing, um, well, there's nothing specific. I mean, the guidelines are anchored in the ordinance. They're, they're allowed by the ordinance. It's not the other way around. Um, so uh, but it's where, what is an entrance corridor and where, which um, what things fall under the B A R or E R B's purview, you may alter that. Um, uh, I think, for example, it would really help to clarify what I look at and what you all need to look at. Um, right now, we kind of have a, a policy that we work with, but that should be kind of clear and specific. Um, so you're right, the, the, the guidelines could change or we could modify the guideline without worrying about the ordinance, but it's in those street by street things. That if we're going to do it, let's do it all at once.
Mr. Payne, aesthetics, please.
I wouldn't even know where to begin. I don't know. I think I would share Commissioner uh, Russell's kind of perspective. Um, I'm most interested in more, most immediately the J P A project and just kind of um, what practical, meaningful role the um, planning commission has on um, what that project ends up looking like. Um, because to me, that seems the most relevant area is those larger kind of developments, which our comprehensive plan now allows, that's the trickiest areas, because those are the ones that people get the most upset about aesthetically. And it seems like conceivably, you go to other cities, there is a meaningful difference in the building materials and the designs of how those larger buildings look. And do you have something that is better and more intentional or something that's just clearly the cheapest possible building materials and designs? And you get your gentrification boxes that you could see in any city in the country, anywhere. Um, but I don't know what, if any, mechanism there has to try to guide that design as we move to larger density. And I don't know if this is actually a meaningful um, place to try to guide building materials and design in a more intentional way. I don't know if any of that makes sense, but that's kind of my interest in, in it.
That makes a lot of sense. We keep saying we're going to have this quality of building that's going to reflect a thing that we're, you know, having to find out what that is. But um, that's the mechanism to do that, or else it's going to be the cheapest thing that we can do.
Yeah, I think there is a third option there though, which is like the five over one, the generic five over one that's just like been so tortured by design review to be as articulated as possible and pretend we think that's not, that it still looks like it's from anywhere or even especially looks bad.
I, I would agree. The process can result in just random articulations and a couple of new building materials that functionally aren't interesting in anywhere. To your point, could even be worse.
Not going to say the B A R has ever done that.
But I don't know.
I, I, I think what you, and I say this also, I was a builder in the first third of my professional career. So, you know, I, I, you want me to build something inexpensive, I can build you something inexpensive. In five years, it's going to look like I built it inexpensively. Um, and there's a reason my house, a couple of blocks that way has been standing there since eighteen eighties. Um, and there's a reason that places that were built in the seventies, people can't find a way to sell. So there's a reality to the materials that are used. Now, that's separate from maybe how the architect puts those together. But there is an element in these guidelines about what, what are those materials? And, and, and how are they incorporated in our project? And, and I think, I do think that's going to be a challenge moving forward. It says all, there are things coming and they look great on paper and they look great in the renderings. And you go out there and it's, you know, styrofoam stucco that you can throw a ball through um, or windows that fog up after three years. So. But that's hopefully where I am here to kind of offer some perspective on those. But that's hopefully where I am here to kind of offer some perspective on those.
Mr. Warner, do you have what you need for us?
You know, gave me something to do tonight. I'm really. Didn't get any pizza. I don't know. We're not, BAR is not getting fed either.
VR is buying their own.
I, I, I think you all can get there. I, I just, I really do invite you to, to stop in, let me show you. What we do and how you fit into it. It's a partnership. It's, it's a relationship. It's, it's um. You're not a jury um necessarily. You, you, you're, you're, you're helping to guide in a process and I think. Um, my biggest fear is, like I said, there's a, an expectation an architect's gonna. Put in a lot of money into a design and bring you a final design and that just isn't how the process works. Yeah, maybe when you're building an addition on the back of a house, but a ninety thousand square foot building on West Main is gonna take a process.
Are you asking us permission to do a preliminary discussion?
Uh, well, okay, for example, BAR um. Things that are, some things require a, a preliminary discussion um. I think it's, honestly, we're gonna have to go through the next two rock design review projects and kind of go. How's this feel and what's this like? What, what? Cause I, I do think there are things that are gonna start coming in. And we're gonna see each other more often, so we're gonna have to evaluate that process as it goes. But the architects that I work with in town, and they're the same ones that will be bringing you EC projects. They keep asking me, well, can we, can I just come in and talk to the planning commission about this? It's like. Not the same process, but.
Why not?
Well, we can figure that out. You guys have a lot on your plate and um. And I, I, to have a, a good discussion about a, a design, it can't happen at eleven thirty at night. I mean, it has to be something that, you know, you know, we have a discussion about when everyone's awake and.
Yeah, and we just don't have any work session space.
Would something like two over twos as much as I, two on, two? Not, what was the word you guys?
I do that, I do that with BAR and um.
Two, two ones, there we go, that's the word.
We've done that. Um, it, it's, I think it, it's also, you know. I mean, what form should something have come in? You know, at what point uh should you all be looking at? And, and it's not. Like in BAR, look at something, it's just the, the sort of the. The polygons, it's gonna occupy that space and there's no skin on it, but you're, you're. I will say, that's where the architectural training helps. You sort of see that thing in three dimension, but um.
Something uh we did with East High, uh something we did with East High, uh via, I can't remember which project uh.
That medical building?
That sounds right. Uh, was have a, a small uh meeting during the day, I think with me and Mr. Laendra and the applicant. Uh, talking about design issues. I think this will review it, it.
Like I said, we've done it. It's just been like. It just hasn't been our practice with you all and we have to fix, well, we can do it. I don't mind.
I thought it was productive. Their designs were terrible and then became moderately less terrible. Sorry.
Architects get used to getting beat up. I will say that's, that's a, uh, you know, that's part of their training is to have their. You know, they put their dreams and wishes on a piece of paper and have someone humiliate them about it. That it, it, that they're used to it, so it's okay.
It's okay, we're gonna beat up some engineers right after this.
Engineers are different. So sorry, I know I took more time than, than fifteen minutes. I, 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 I think it's helpful. I think, like I said. We need to get to know each other. You all, I urge you, go through those guidelines. Yes, it's like any other document someone gives you to read, but. You've got a, we've got a responsibility to these applicants to give them, you know. Give them the full attention that they're due, or, or, or otherwise, you know, you can, it's fine, say. I, I abstain or present. I mean, but if you, if we're gonna do the process on the community's behalf. Need to be at least familiar with the guidelines. Uh, there are some on the BAR who have memorized the things and I, I, I love that. But, you know, I'm not asking you to become, you know, an expert on them, but be familiar with them so that we can at least work through them and apply. Um, other than that, I, I thank you guys, cause I know this is not what you always do. I am grateful for your service.
Thank you, thank you for your patience.
Nah, I don't have patience tonight.
How are we feeling? Are we ready for tea?
You have more stuff.
We're not that close to an issue about. Steep streets.
Steep streets.
Good evening, commissioners or not, yeah, planning commissioners. Um, my name's Brendan Duncan. I'm the city traffic engineer. Um, I'm here tonight to bring forward, I guess, talk about the, the staff's report for um a street. Street grade waiver that was denied by staff um and the applicant has then taken their. Ability to appeal that to the planning commission. Um, so this is for two forty stripling. Um, I won't read verbatim my uh, my staff report here, but um. Uh, this first came before planning commission as a PUD application and um critical slope application back. In twenty, early twenty twenty one um. Uh, to give a little bit of the history of that from staff's perspective, during that process, um, we did note um. The, the steepness or the apparent steepness of some of the streets in that application um to the applicant. Um, uh, they subsequently said, not a problem, we'll address that at, um, when we get to the site plan stage um. Uh, we, again, we had made, made our comments known. Um, so fast forward to um then getting the, the um. The application for the site plan noting that the, the eight percent that was, should be, be met was nine and a half percent. Um, and uh, you know, the applicant. For the code um submitted a request for waiver um. Up to the, the ten percent, so they have grades at, at nine and a half percent um on their current site plan application. Um, in their waiver, they. Uh, identified five areas uh that of reason to, that they should be granted the waiver. Um, those included existing site constraints, um minimizing the environmental impacts, um community safety and welfare. Uh, accessibility considerations and then um basically supporting documents from VDOT and ASHTO. Um, that say that they allow for streets steeper than, than the eight percent um as well. Uh, their uh application for that waiver is included, was included in your packet, so I, I'm not gonna go over that in detail. Um, but the, the staff's, I guess, responses to those, um, as far as the existing site constraints. Um, we didn't feel that there was enough justification to grant it solely on, on site constraints. There are steep grades on the site. Um, but as part of their current site plan application, they're moving a, a lot of. Earth. Um, there's, there's cuts and fills in, you know, close to ten to twelve feet all over the place. Um, so it's not like they're trying to adhere to the existing topography of this, this site. They're, they're doing a, you know, a mass terraform of the site to, to get to their final thing. Um. Environmental impacts, um, they, they noted that um there would be, in, in order to accomplish the eight percent grades. Um, that there would be a lot of fill that they would have to bring in. Um. They had not pre, uh, presented us with kind of background documentation of that. Um, and staff didn't feel the need to ask for it because in our opinion, um. It was more of a financial burden of having to bring in and, and truck out dirt than an actual environmental um reason. Um, but eh, again, noting the amount of dirt that's moving on the site. Um, and looking at some of the topography, I, I don't have the ability to, to say yes or no as to, you know, whether the, there's truly a thousand truckloads. Um, that will be coming in, so I'll just, I'll note that. Um. The, the third item um that they had on their community safety and welfare. Um, again, it was kind of the, the trucks coming in and out down um stripling. Um, and then also the fact that they would need to, to add retaining walls at the back. Uh, again, the, you know, the, the retaining walls seems much more like a. Um, financial burden, which in the city code, it does not allow staff to kind of take into consideration when making these determinations. Um, there's already retaining walls that are ten, fifteen feet tall, um adding, you know, four to six feet of retaining wall. On top of that, doesn't seem like it's, you know, really a safety concern, um, you know, over and above what's already there. Um, the fourth one is, is really where staff's um, uh. I guess hesitation with granting this waiver is, it's the accessibility um considerations. Um. ADA is a very complex um. Document, eh, eh, I, it's not even really a document. It's a, it's a way of thinking. I don't know, I don't know how, how to put it. There, there are guidelines for ADA as it pertains to buildings. There are guidelines as it pertains to. The right of way um for trails, so like there's, you know, and a, a lot of times, it's, it's one of those things where you're not truly in violation. Until you're sued. Um, and, and so eh, staff stance and. On this is the, the maximum, eh, eh, the jux of the issue is the maximum allowable ADA grade. Um, that's actually presented in any text is, is one on twelve, um, which is eight point three three percent. Um, the, there is a, a stipulation in there that allows for sidewalks to meet. An existing road grade, um, and, and that that's in compliance. Um, but it's staff's. You know, understanding and talking to FHWA, the Federal Highway Administration, um. As well as just uh, uh, the intent of the code that we feel um. It deserves is that, you know, it should be as accessible as possible. Um. The, the current code says it's eight percent, um, you know, and that we can waive it up to ten percent, but. Um, really, you know, we're, we're trying to, to make it as accessible as possible and think that the eight percent is achievable. Um. The, the last point, again, referencing the, the uh VDOT and ASHTO and PROAG guidelines. Um, you know, the city is allowed to be more restrictive than VDOT and ASHTO. Um, currently, our code is more restrictive than VDOT and ASHTO. So referencing that and saying that, you know, we're in compliance with that really. Doesn't have any varying on whether or not we should grant, at least in our opinion, um, the waiver. So, uh, overall, um, staff didn't feel like there was enough backing or enough reasons um. To, to grant the waiver. Um, Patrick, can you bring up a couple of the slides that I had? Um, so again, just for, for visual reference here, um, should I go to the next slide? Yeah, so this, this is the development um as was kind of proposed in the initial um application. On the left of the screen is Stribbling Avenue. Thank you. Um, and kind of middle of the screen on the, the top part. Um, I don't think you can really see it that well in the, in the PDF, but there's the cul-de-sac for Morgan Court. Um, so the green highlighted areas on the screen are the four locations. Um, where the road exceeds the eight percent threshold. Um. The, you know, the. The application was put in as a, a kind of a blanket application for all of these areas and we treated it as that. If you so choose, you can kind of, you know, maybe look, look at it as four separate areas, cause I think they are. There is a, you know, possibly a way where you could make it work on some of these, if not all of them. Um, it's still my assertion that um the development could be done. Um. You know, ma- meeting the eight percent, excuse me. Um, while still leaving the current layout, uh, again, the fact that we had brought this up during the whole PUD discussion when. The layout wasn't set, you know, that's a little frustrating from staff's point of view, um, because, you know. You could have a completely different layout and this wouldn't be an issue at all. Um, same thing with the critical slopes, saying that, you know, we have to stay within the critical slopes that we asked for back when we were getting the PUD. Um, you know, that discussion, again, if, if we had a different design or whatever, you know, you're accounting for it on the front end instead of. Trying to do a design and then be like, oh, it doesn't fit and, and now give us a waiver. Um, so more generally, um. One of the, one of the main reasons for the denial was. There's two fixed grade points. There's Stribbling Avenue and there's Morgan Court. Um. And the, the straight grade between those two roads is, I, I believe it's like six point three percent. Um, so there's really, you know, no reason not to be able to achieve eight percent. We have, we have granted the waiver. Um, in other recent um things, in fact, one of them was Charlie Armstrong's other development, uh Keen Court. Um, that, that street, eh, you know, we had two fixed grades and you just could not physically get. You know, eight percent between there, so we made sure that the, the intersections were one hundred percent, you know. Met all of the stipulations of ADA. Um. And then the, the tangential pieces of it, we allowed to go steeper than that, just so that we could actually connect to the streets. Um, so it's, it's not that staff is saying that it's never appropriate, um, but in this instance, with the fact that, you know, those. You can physically connect those two points with a straight line um of six percent. You know, there's really no reason not to, to rea- reach eight percent. Um, so yeah, so it's, it's staff's recommendation that. Um, planning commission would uphold the denial. Um, we do have several suggested motions on there. If you, you choose to follow those, um, that's it for, for my presentation. Uh, I know the applicant has something that they'd like to share as well.
Uh, I'd like to hear from a funding commissioner for staff. Uh, Mr. Mitchell, do you have questions on that?
No, it's pretty clear. I'm looking forward to the applicant's rebuttal.
Mr. Rethio?
Yeah.
Mr. Russell?
I don't think I have any questions for staff.
It's short.
No questions for staff.
It's just open, but.
Um, not right now.
Mr. Palmer?
Nope.
Mr. Payne?
No.
Are we opening ourselves up to a lawsuit?
What, if you. If you approve.
If you, if you approve the appeal. I don't believe so.
I love that, thank you.
But I'm not a lawyer.
I would like to hear from the applicant, please.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. Uh, my name is Clint Shiflett. I'm with Timmins Group, uh, civil engineer. Uh, representing uh the applicant Southern Development on this project. Um, oh, can we put the, um, yeah, just, great. I hate to have to describe every, every slide.
I know, it's us.
We've been up there all time.
That was my plan. So I, I won't go through an introduction. I think everybody's aware of the two forty Stribbling Avenue project. I think. Uh, Brandon did a pretty good job of kind of running through our request. Um, the, um, yeah, I guess we'll go to the next slide. So this is a pretty brief presentation. Um, generally, I want to just kind of hit some of the high points for the most part in the waiver. Um, can we go back to that one previously? Sorry. Um, so real quick, I want to just kind of explain uh to the commission uh. That uh kind of what, what is a ten percent slope street? What does it feel like? I know we throw these percentages out there. Um, but you know, kind of understanding, where do they feel like? How do they function? I think is important and, and what, what is some, uh, some precedent, some context in the city? Uh, so I just want to do a couple of these, just so we can kind of all be aware. Um, this one right here is at a, a Rose Hill uh Avenue. Or Rose Hill Drive, excuse me, right at the intersection of Preston Avenue. Um, right here, we're right at about ten percent of this location. Um, we can go to the next slide. Just one more example, this provides maybe a little more neighborhood context. Um, this is Sunset Road, just down the street from the proposed development. Um, I think this location right here, we, we picked up a, a slope about twelve and a half percent. Um, there's of course, you know, you go down further on Sunset Road, if you guys are familiar with this area, it gets quite a bit steeper than that. Uh, this area right here that we kind of indicated is right at about twelve and a half percent, just down the street uh here in the Fry Springs uh neighborhood. Um, you know, we'll note, you know, we, we kind of did a desktop survey um across city GIS. Um, and, and it, it's important to know, there's a lot, a lot of precedent for this. There are dozens. Uh, that, that may even be an understatement, the streets to the city of Charlottesville that, that well exceed ten percent. Uh, next slide, please. It's kind of elementary diagram here, but we just kind of wanted to demonstrate, um, you know. What, what, hey, what is the difference in a eight, eight percent, nine and a half percent grade? Um, so that's what this represents. The gray line here at the bottom uh is at zero percent. Uh, the blue line at eight percent, um, and then. Uh, the blue line at eight percent, um, and then our waiver request, which is up to ten percent. But our current design, uh, indicates, um, a maximum slope of nine and a half percent. So that's the difference, that's to scale, that's, um, um, you know, actual slopes. Uh, next slide. And Brandon, some of our, uh, our slides were overlap here, so, uh,
Oh yeah, I took them straight from your
So, um, this one right here, we just wanted to kind of demonstrate, and I, Brandon touched on some, but, uh, demonstrating kind of how we're trying to limit the use of the steep grades. Um, you know, I think it's important to note that we're not, you know, coming in here and, 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 um, you know, trying to throw steep grades everywhere, trying to be thoughtful about how we're implementing them. Um, and so the areas here in green indicate the areas that we are, uh, our current design has grades steeper than eight percent. Um, you'll notice between the green areas, so this will come up later in the conversation when we talk about ADA, uh, accessibility. We flatten out at the intersections intentionally to be able to provide, uh, PROAG. Uh, is, is the new buzzword now, Public Rights Way of Accessibility Guidelines, which is, is kind of what the city engineering staff is, is hanging their hat on for these sort of things. Um, anyways, we're flattening, we're flattening, uh, at, at each of those intersections such a way that we can uh, provide road crossings that are compliant with the PROAG standards. Uh, next slide. Again, just briefly, Brandon kind of shared this as well. So this is kind of existing, existing conditions, uh, and constraints, Matt. Um, this is in the waiver. I think a lot of these things that you're going to see here were, were in the waiver. Um, the brown lines there kind of indicate the proposed, um, road network. Um, it's kind of overlaid on the existing conditions. Um, as you can see, we, we, we roughly have a slope across the site, particularly from that high point uh, on the left end of the site, uh, closer to Stribling Avenue, uh, of about eleven percent in grade, uh, existing today. Um, as Brandon noted, if you do draw that blue straight line, and it may be hard to tell on this slide here, but it's, again, it's in the PC packet and in the waiver uh, itself, but I think it's six point, uh, six point three percent is the existing slope, tying point to point. That is accurate. Um, something that doesn't take into account completely is that there's a high point. You know, there's a ridge that comes up and then back down that you have to navigate. Um, as well, and it also doesn't take into account the fact that we have to flatten out at each of those intersections. Um, to be able to provide, uh, flat enough grade for adequate pedestrian crossing. So it's, it's kind of a tough. Um, it's tough to evaluate it based on, hey, is it six point three percent? Well, yes, but large segments of the road cannot be that steep. Um, I'll also note, I think we heard, uh, Brendan note, um, two fixed points. Um, those are two fixed points on the site, you know, I, I would argue that the, maybe the more constraining element of the site as a whole over here on the east side of the site is associated with Morse Creek, the associated, uh, steep slopes and one hundred year floodplain. Um, which we have to stay completely out of. So that kind of condenses that site in further constricting, um, you know, length to be able to transition grade, things like that. Um, so you know, there, there's several constraints. Also note, kind of if you look at the left side of the sheet here, closer to Stribling. Um, we have residential uses close to those property lines. Um, so we have to stay pretty close to grade in that left, kind of like, eh, if this was Oklahoma, right, it's be the panhandle. Um, on, on the extent of, of that, we have to maintain as close as we can to existing grade to not impact uh, the lot. So that, that's also a constraint. So, I mean, I, I would say this site is, is pretty heavily constrained, even, even beyond those two points that, that I think Brendan pointed out. Um, next slide, please. Um, sorry for the text, um, but environmental impacts, commu- community safety. Um, so we were asked by, by, you know, engineering staff, and I think, I think it's part of the, um, waiver re- request process, uh, to demonstrate why granting the waiver would have a positive environmental impact. How it would improve, uh, community safety. We, we kind of hung our hat on two items, and this is really the crux of, of why we're asking for the waiver to begin with. Um, so approval of the waiver, uh, would, would provide, uh, a balanced site, that is, earthwork of the project would roughly balance. Meaning minimal dump truck loads in and out of the site to carry filter. Um, which causes decreased volume of construction traffic. Um, denial of the waiver would result in a thousand, uh, north of a thousand large dump truck trips to and from the site uh, to import approximately twelve thousand five hundred cubic yards of filter. Um, that in turn, uh, means an increased volume of construction traffic on Stribling Avenue. And everything that comes along with that, uh, increased air pollution, noise, vibrations, community nuisance of, of that many large trucks coming in and out of Stribling Avenue, um, which, which we feel can be avoided. And, and, and I will note on, on the, the, the analysis we did for this, we, we did a really rigorous um, earthworks, cut, fill, balance, uh, analysis, uh, as part of our design, um, we're taking into account things like compaction rates, um, depth of paving, pavement sections. We, we feel like this that fifteen or, uh, twelve thousand five hundred cubic yards, a thousand dump truck loads is, is was arrived at in a, um, in, in, in a pretty precise manner. Um, so we, we, we do, we do support that number. We feel um, that, that is accurate. Next slide, please. I'm almost done. Um, the second part of the environmental impacts is, um, um, you know, the, the fact that street grades would also have a major impact to the site retaining walls. Um, we heard some things in the email correspondence, and I think again tonight, that, that maybe the perception of, of staff may be that cost is what's driving, uh, this waiver request. Um, you know, we ran some numbers, talked to, to Charlie, to the develop, development folks, um, you know, early this week, last week, we crunched some of that. Um, it's important to note that, that filter is essentially free. Um, you've got projects going on at UVA, um, getting rid of dirt and paying to do so. Um, and, and, and Charlie, you know, at Southern Developments, and, and in my, my, uh, experience as well, it's really rare that a contractor would have to pay to bring in filter, but that's essentially no cost. Um, when we looked at the cost of retaining walls, the additional retaining walls that would need to be, uh, constructed, we get about fifty thousand dollars worth of retaining wall. Um, and, and, and that is a, is pretty nominal number, uh, given the overall scope and, and budget of the project. Um, but again, so a, a approval of the waiver to provide the slopes, uh, up to ten percent in grade would result in minimization of the retaining walls' height and length. Uh, denial, uh, would result in additional one hundred eighty-five feet of retaining walls um, at about six foot addition, average height, and an additional two and a half to four feet in height uh, to what we're proposing, uh, already of two hundred and thirty-one feet of retaining walls. Next slide. Um, this is kind of the second big point, I think we heard from staff, was, uh, pedestrian accessibility considerations. Um, so, um, I guess I'll just kind of jump into the code here. So road grades up to ten percent, as requested, are consistent with the following accessibility guidelines. Uh, specifically the US Board's PROAG, which is the Public Right-of-Way Accessibility Guidelines I mentioned earlier. Um, in their code section, uh, titled Within Street or Highway Right-of-Way, it states where pedestrian access routes are contained within a street or highway right-of-way. The grade of pedestrian access route shall not exceed the general grade established for the adjacent street or highway. Um, that is a long way of saying, if the sidewalk slopes match the adj- adjacent, um, street, then they are compliant. Uh, the second portion, I think, so that, that kind of deals with longitudinal slopes. Uh, so thinking about cross slopes as we cross intersections, kind of the second piece of this. Um, so in the section in the PROAG documentation, the guidelines, uh, titled Pedestrian Street Crossings Without Yield or Stop Control. Uh, it states where pedestrian access routes are contained within pedestrian street crossings without yield or stop control, the cross slope of the pedestrian access route shall be five percent maximum. Um, we've demonstrated in the site plan documents, um, as well as the waiver requests, which I think you guys have all seen. Um, we, we've, we've ran profiles, cross-section profiles across each of those intersections to demonstrate that we're actually at four point eight percent max. Um, cross slopes across those intersections. So we're, again, are in compliance with, with, with all of the, the guidance that's applicable to, to the project. Next slide, please. So the request of waiver request for street grades that we're asking, uh, is, is also in compliance with national state uh, city, uh, national, state and city, uh, standards of design as it relates to road design. Um, I think as Brandon mentioned, ASHTO is the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. Um, and their green book is, is what this book is called, which is, uh, is the leading guidance manual that contains the current standards uh, for highway and street design. Um, VDOT kind of derives their standards from ASHTO. Um, city of Charlottesville, I think, eh, eh, at least in part leans on some of that guidance. Um, but the, uh, the green book, uh, for the local roads and streets states grades for local and residential streets shall be less than fifteen percent. Um, way, way higher in, uh, s- steepness and then what we're, we are requesting. Um, VDOT's geometric design standards for urban and local street system also states that maximum percent of grade shall be fifteen percent. Um, and then even in the Charlottesville Standards and Design Manual, uh, which is current, uh, in the geometric design standards for urban and local street systems states that the maximum street grades shall be less than ten percent. Um, so, you know, our request is, is very much within the framework of all these guidelines. Um, and, and, and I think lives up to all of these standards. Alright, next slide. This is the last one. Um, so to conclude, um, you know, I think, eh, it's kind of put a bow on this. We would like to point out that this waiver request is in line with the goals of the comprehensive plan. Uh, and considering the impact of development in natural and cultural resources, uh, as well as prioritizing the quality of life for Charlottesville residents. Uh, the waiver request demonstrates in great detail the environmental and community benefits, uh, which significantly outweigh the reasons to deny the waiver. Uh, additionally, we've also demonstrated on, you know, on top of all of that, compliance with local, state and, uh, uh, national guidelines and regulations for both highway design, street design, um, and accessibility standards. Um, so that's all I've got for my presentation. Um, we appreciate your consideration of the waiver and, uh, happy to answer any questions.
Nick, Mr. Mitchell, questions?
So are you a lawyer?
I am not. I, I was not, no. I had an older sister, though. We, we, we debated quite a bit.
I absolutely, because you've, uh, you answered many of my questions and you've answered most of them. There's only one that, that you didn't answer, and I think your question is, why are we here? Why do we, I mean, I think, I think these guys suggested all along that there were going to be problems with the grades. If you got, um, to, 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 to certain steepness. And I think, given the process, you indicated that you would work through it as you worked through the site plan. But we obviously didn't work through it. So how do we get to, uh, when did you know that nine point five was needed? And why did it take us two now to, to know that that's what you needed?
Yeah, that's a good question. And Brandon's a hundred percent right. Uh, this was discussed at the PUD level. Um, that engineering, you know, you know, unofficial conversations, email correspondence, you name it, you know. And then, and a hundred percent, you know, eh, the idea was, hey, you know, are you able to obtain this? And stay within that eight percent, um, limit. Um, because, you know, we, we would prefer, prefer you to do so. And the, the answer is, yes, from an engineering perspective, it can be done. Um, anything can be done. We can make the road at five percent, four percent, three percent with a hundred foot retaining walls and, and we bringing in, you know, ten thousand loads of dirt. So anything can be accomplished. I think what happens is that the PUD process, and, and particularly with this one, we did a lot of front-end engineering work. But I think we all know that the PUD is not a, a fully engineered document, not fully designed. Um, when we get G, you know, um, we, we get our geotechnical data on the soils, we get um, we really start digging into the cut, fill balance. What do those street sections look like, right? Because that has a big bearing on, you know, how much soil is coming in and out of the site. Um, um, so it's just that next level of engineering that kind of informed us, hey, you know, can we do eight percent? Yeah, we can. Um, we think it's better for the community if we can get this at nine and a half percent, though. And, and it was kind of that final engineering um, process that, that led us to that, to that decision. Hey, believe me, we, we would, we would rather not come in for a waiver. It would, it would be easier that way. Uh, for, for everyone, but, um, again, it's just kind of as final engineering progresses, that it kind of led us to this, to this conclusion.
That's good. Mr. Rethio?
Uh, yeah, you, uh, answered several of my questions. Uh, I may want to come back, but right now I'm
Sure. Bye. Ms. Russell?
So I really want to try to understand what this means for people navigating the site and, and um, and that's where I struggle, uh, you know, interpreting the code. And, and, and understanding what the street means versus the sidewalk. Um, so could you, maybe it would be helpful on that, that site plan with the green lines, like, like just kind of like layman's out for me, how would someone with a mobility issue get from a car, from their parking, you know, how are they going to navigate? Um, and what barriers are they going to encounter?
Sure. Well, I, I, I will note, just kind of overall, uh, during the site plan review process, we are going to have to answer all those questions. Um, to be, to like, in, in great detail, right? It's, the city engineering staff will be reviewing the plans to make sure we're meeting all applicable uh, pro, pro, PROAG or ADA, uh, accessibility requirements. Though, those will have to be demonstrated or, or they can't approve uh, our site plan. So, so that, you know, just to make kind of everybody, you know, there is, there are checks and balances of that. Like, we don't get this waiver and then, you know, it's kind of willy-nilly. We can, you know, do whatever we want from that perspective. But to answer your, your questions specifically, um, you, you, this, the site plan will, will demonstrate that, I, I guess. You know, like, for instance, the, the, um, um, the, the buildings here, the two multifamily buildings have underbuilding parking with designated, um, designated, um, ADA spaces with elevators, for instance. Um, so the, the solution, you know, to, to accessibility is different, kind of depending on where you're at uh, on the site and what, what you're trying to access. Um, but, but, but generally speaking, as far as the streetscape and, and sidewalks go adjacent to the streets and for the street crossings, um, um, like, a- again, we, we are in full compliance of, of those standards.
Um, So like sidewalks would either step, um, you know, have like
So, so the, so the sidewalks would just follow the road grade?
So I mean, I'd find that point kind of moot because you're creating the road grade, right? So, like, you were establishing the grades in the road, so I don't really think that's really, um, I don't know, effective argument.
Sure. But I, I will note, I mean, the notion of eight point three three percent, I think came up. Um, th- that number really has no bearing in, in this. That, that number relates specifically to a, a ramp. So an ADA ramp, usually that is, uh, you know, curb ramp for a, a, um, pedestrian access up onto a curb. Uh, or, or access to a building. Uh, you know, you have to have landings and so forth. That's kind of a, that's kind of a different thing. Um, really by, by the letter of the law, if you have sidewalks that are not associated with roads or streets, the maximum longitudinal slope that you can have is five percent. Um, so, so eight percent well exceeds that. So, you know, eight point three three is, is kind of arbitrary when we're talking about sidewalks that uh, follow street grades as far as any of the ADA or PROAG standards are concerned.
So another, so are you saying that in order for the sidewalks to truly be accessible, they would have to be five percent grade?
So, so if a sidewalk, if a sidewalk is not associated with a street, a, a different set of rules kind of apply, right? So if you have a sidewalk that runs through a park and it does not follow a street grade or anything of that nature, the sidewalk to be ADA compliant has to be at five percent, or you can transition grade eight point three three percent slope ramps. But that's not applicable in the setting of a, of a road network.
And is there, I think, Mr. Schwartz, uh, alluded to this in our pre-meeting, is there, is there a public, um, kind of like a park facility in this, in the site plan? I just don't remember. Was there a green space or something like that?
Yeah, there is. I mean, I, I, I think some of that's being, um, programmed now as we speak, uh, with our landscape architect uh, and architecture team. Uh, but certainly there's, there's, uh, you know, kind of stepped down green space areas, uh, that kind of that larger area in the middle is a large green space. Um, I think for the most part right now, those are kind of being, uh, looked at as more passive uh, uses, more passive green space areas as opposed to, um, something more programmed. But yeah, I mean, there's, there's quite a bit of green space in here.
I guess there's that sort of like more esoteric questions. We, as the commission, need to ask some specific questions for you. Um, what, in your estimation, how long, how many days, how many, what's the pain pack factor of the, of bringing in a thousand loads of dirt? You know, like how many trucks, how many days would that take?
Now, I wasn't prepared for that one. Um, I, I, I don't know offhand. I mean, I, I think, um, I, I would think several days worth. And, and in a, in a heavy volume and, and heavy, uh, um, frequency. You know, and that's, that's round trips.
Sure.
I, I could, I could reach out to my, uh, to our contractor friends and, and probably give you a better answer on that, but uh, so, so, some, some of that's really going to be to do with availability. So when you're trucking in dirt Uh, so some of some of that's really going to be to do with availability. So when you're trucking in dirt from another site, you know, you got to get it when. Uh, when it's ready to be, uh, taken, right? So so it may not all occur at once.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm trying to understand the order of magnitude, like in. A project that's already going to have a lot of truck traffic and and we heard about that in public comment, right? So those are some concerns of the neighborhood, like. Where does this, you know, how much worse is this?
Yeah, I mean, I would say, I mean, you know, as far as construction traffic back and forth on tripling. Uh, obviously, as things start to go vertical, houses start to get built, materials are being brought in. Um, you're going to have a good amount of traffic coming in certainly, um, but during the site work process. You know, it's it's really that initial mobilization effort for the most part, where you're you're bringing in the heavy equipment. Um, to the site and and then you're kind of moving dirt around within the site.
Yeah, you're taking a lot of.
Yeah.
Um, vegetation out too in that first stage.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, for the site work component is is largely kind of self-contained, um. You know, and and again, you will have that traffic again, like I said, coming in with with materials for the buildings and things of that nature, but. Um, we feel like we can really limit, um. A a good chunk of that heavy. Heavy construction traffic by limiting the need to import dirt.
Okay, those are my questions.
Turning to Mr. Schwartz.
I think you guys already asked all my questions.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Um, thanks, yeah, uh, to maybe follow up on one of Commissioner Russell's question, um. Is, uh, is that site work phase the grading, uh, like, well, you have a phase. Plan, right? Um, is the grading all at once in the beginning and then the phasing is just about when you build the structures and maybe roads?
Yes, I mean, the E N S plans or erosion sediment control plans kind of dictate. Um, how the site work progresses. So you have to put in certain, uh, like a construction entrance that's stone. Uh, to help with bringing, you know, to minimize dirt coming in and out of the site, for instance, uh. Uh, you would establish, um, areas to impound stormwater. Uh, during construction, so it doesn't run off into Morris Creek and and put sediment into Morris Creek, for instance. Um, so that's that we we refer to those sort of plans as the erosion sediment control plan. Um, yeah, I I think this plan probably has four, five, maybe even six phases of E N S where it's kind of documented how the site plan progresses. Um. Yeah, I mean, you you would have mass, you know, again, you would you would put in those measures specifically to deal with deal with stormwater. Um, then progress with kind of your mass grading efforts. Um, and 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 kind of progress from there. I don't know if that answers your question.
Can you clarify if that means per phase or like? O- overall, uh, is there one larger, uh, grading and clearing or is that by those phased?
Yeah, so I, so I I may have misinterpreted. Were were you speaking specifically of like how the how the buildings will will come to be? And and that, is that what you meant by phasing?
I don't know, now I'm confused, because you have four E N S phases and six phases in your phasing exhibit.
Sure.
So is the six for the buildings?
So they don't, they don't necessarily correspond.
Okay.
With each other, though, they they like the the, yeah, the phases that the six phases are are for the buildings.
Okay.
Um, again, kind of thinking through. Through, um, the process of 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 cost estimating and and getting with a general contractor and figuring out how all that's going to come to be. Some of that could, um, some of that phasing could shift a little bit, you know, market needs, right? I mean, how fast? Uh, how many units need to come online, how quickly? So I think some of that is still being sussed out. The E N S plan, though, is kind of independent. Um, and we expect that to largely remain the same.
Could I maybe, could I maybe clarify the comment? Cause I think, I think what she's asking. Is will all of the clearing and all of the grading and basically will the roads be put in all at one time? Or will those be staged?
For the E N S.
For for, you know, with the E N S plan. So is everything happening is the, we know the buildings are in different stages. But will the grading, will the the roadway and the fill and all that kind of stuff, will all of that have to happen? At the get-go. I believe that's what you were getting at.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying, yeah, um. Yes, so the the mass grading efforts, getting everything to final grade. Will be occurring at once.
Yeah.
Now, now there there may be some discussion that we move forward, like, hey, do we, um. Do we build the road network up to this point? And then phase that second half of road construction, maybe, but all of the grading effort, does that make sense? Everything will be on grade. Uh, all all, you know, that'll happen initially, yeah.
Okay. Um. We don't have this thing anymore. Uh, sorry, yeah, if you don't mind, Patrick, um, the. Actually, let me skip that one. Uh, you are showing, uh, we'll skip the one for now. Um, you're showing. You're saying if we don't give you the waiver, you'll have to import twelve, then a, twelve thousand five hundred cubic yards if you. Wait, yeah, if you do get the waiver, uh, you're showing exporting eighteen hundred cubic yards, so something like. Eighty dump trucks, right? Um.
But like intensely, we 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 feel like that 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 we will generally be balancing. I mean, I I think when you get into a site like this, you encounter, um. Unforeseen, you know, rock, um, you name it, um, although I don't think our our geo. Technical exploration has shown a lot of rock on this site, but, um, you you can never get that number exact. Let me, the idea is that that eighteen hundred is or, um. Was that in the waiver? That number?
Yeah, that's what you wrote.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, and I think that number is within a a an area that we can fine tune with with. Moving forward with additional site plan, um, um. Reviews and refinement of the plans to 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 get that to essentially zero. Again, you can never guarantee zero. But the idea is that that that, you know, if you look at the the breadth of of earthworks that's being taking place on site, that eighteen hundred is is. Um, is is close. So the, again, generally speaking, the idea is that if the waiver is. Uh, approved, that we can generally make the site balanced and and eliminate for a large number of truckloads to come in. No guarantee that some won't come in, yeah.
So, um. Well, so that that's an export in your plan, uh, so that's going out. Um, so the question would be like, if you have that extra margin, um. Couple thousand extra cubic yards of dirt, can you use that to make your. Grades a little bit less steep on some of these roads in a later, uh, you know, in like the final site plan stage?
I mean, we can certainly explore that. I mean, I I would say, you know, if you look eighteen hundred cubic yards, um. Over a site this large is, um. I, the benefits will be pretty minimal. Pick that up if that makes any sense. Um, you know, we we have some things that we're still considering, you know, like, um. Like building foundations, for instance, like there, there's still some some final, final engineering things that that could tweak that number back and forth by a factor of. You know, ten, twenty percent, that eighteen hundred, so. Um, again, that's where we're at right now with our engineering calculations and and but we feel confident that we can get that. Uh, to to balance, uh, I mean, that's how we design sites. That's how we move forward with these sort of projects is with a goal of. Of of making the earthworks balance.
Okay.
So so the answer is maybe, you know, some, but I, you know, eighteen hundred cubic yards. Uh, is pretty minimal over a site this big, so you know, can we? Can we eliminate the need maybe moving forward if, you know. Once some more refinement takes place of of being able to eliminate. You know, five feet of nine and a half percent road out out of each of those green sections, ma- you know, maybe. Um, and and that's certainly something we would, you know, do if we can. Uh, but we we do feel confident of the need, uh, for the nine and a half percent. Uh, and and again, part of the reason why we're, you know, I know the waiver is up to ten percent. Um, you know, you'll, I I noted with the cross slopes, the road where the pedestrian crossings are that we're proposing four point eight percent. Um, we're check, we're allowing for construction tolerances, you know, we don't, we we know the contractors always get it right. And so we don't want to get too close to that five percent. Same thing with the nine point five percent. Um, you know, it's not uncommon that a contractor puts a road down and it's, you know, point one percent off in either direction, so. Just trying to give ourselves that buffer, um, which is, you know, if anybody's wondering why, why nine and a half percent, um, but that's why we went with that number.
Yep. Um, so another question, uh, gee, for that lower right apartment building, the lower apartment building. Do you know where the entrance is?
For pedestrians?
Yes.
Not. Offhand. There there will be, eh, those, those, those buildings are being developed right now, uh, with the architect. Um, we we generally know where the vehicular access is coming in. Um.
See that one, yeah.
And again, the idea, the idea is that the ADA access or or Pro Ag, whatever you want to call it, um, the accessibility. Um, needs folks would would enter from designated spaces underneath the building. Um, that will all be demonstrated, um, eh, we we may have some exhibits on the site plan already that do demonstrate that, but if if not, we we'll have to anyway, so. Um, but yeah, there will be several entrances coming out to the street there, um, where exactly on the building they're going to be located. Um, is 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 still to be determined.
So there are going to be multiple entrances to the building. Are they independent or are they linked by? Interior hallway?
By like corridors. I I'm not sure offhand, I I think, um. I I don't know.
What's the height of the buildings? Story was twice? Three stories, four stories?
I don't know offhand.
Okay.
Okay, so the the I don't think it was included in the waiver, but the the cover sheet. Of the site plan, uh, I do believe indicates that, um. I I can get that information back to you, you know, fairly quickly. I just don't know offhand.
Um, okay, yeah, I mean, I I guess what I'm getting at is like. You know, is there a way to change? I, I, I don't. Quite care about all of these slips, right? Like, that green bit on the bottom right. You can make that a fifty percent grade and I don't care. Nobody's going to ever walk there because it doesn't go to anything.
Sure.
Um. You know, the cul-de-sac on Road J. Um, you know, even honestly, a lot of Road J in general, given that, um, the only thing along it is. You know, ten townhomes that all have stairs in them, um, but. Like getting to the apartment building, um, getting just out of the site, um. You know, that's sort of what I care about more and. And yeah, you can say, well, people can still live in the apartment building by driving everywhere, but. Uh, you know, the aim of these rules and ADA compliance in general is to. Make it possible, uh, to kind of navigate the world, um, without having to drive everywhere.
Sure.
Um. Like to use the public sidewalks, um. So like. You know, is there? Some like. Regearing of of what slopes are steep and and what are. Not that can be done, um, to help alleviate that to create, uh, you know, within that one to twelve path of. Like to get to, say, the bottom right apartment building.
Yeah, I mean, I, like, like I said, I mean, like, I think we've mentioned it and we we can share some of the analysis we've done, uh, with engineering, but. We've done a lot of iterations of this, um, you know, the the length of nine and a half percent slope kind of on that bottom street. I I hear what you're saying. I mean, that but that's really the most crucial leg right there, because that's really where you're diving down, um. And and then again, we have to honor the the flatter slopes, the intersections, um. You know, I I will know, and I think I, you know, not to 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 drive this point home too much, but. This fully, fully is in line with with all leading, uh, ADA Pro Ag, Pro Ag regulations. This nine and a half percent slope is just as compliant as an eight percent slope would be in that location. It's no, it's no less compliant. Um, it's 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 fully, um, you know, within the framework and with within. Um, we, you know, we've done projects like this, like if this project were funded by like Virginia Housing or Lytec or something of that nature, you you have to show. Um. You know, accessibility routes and things of that nature to show that your site is accessible. Can you get to the dumpster? Can you get to? These various things, th- this, this would a hundred percent, um. This would work. This, 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 this would meet, uh, their standards as well, um, eh, for for ADA compliance, if that makes sense, so.
Yeah, I I mean, I get that it meets the letter of the law because ADA compliance only applies within the site and Pro Ag. For the right to weigh will do, will let you do twice what the city's, you know, minimum without a waiver is.
Yeah, I mean, they they just kind of cover two different things. I mean, I think I think ADA is is largely, um. Um, like how many parking spaces do you have? Where do those parking spaces need to look like? Like very, they they cover some specific things. They Pro Ag. Um. It provides more, uh, detail outside of that, like relative to, um, eh, eh, specifics of right of ways.
Yeah, and and it's much looser, right? So so I I get that it's compliant, but you know, the the spirit of it is to. Or the spirit of of generally accessibility happens general of the city's. Uh, you know, street, trinket, grid limits is to make the site accessible. So so I guess the question is, do you feel within? Like that you guys have. Um. You know, to the best of your ability, um, like. Made this design, uh, as accessible for the, for actually getting to the places where people are going to go. A- a- and kind of, you know, like, like, could you sacrifice other places like the bottom of the hill? Uh, to be even more out of compliance with the city's. Rule to make it a little bit better up top.
Yeah, sure, yeah, yeah, and I I get that, you know, have you, have you considered that balance? I mean, I think the answer's. Eh, again, is 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 yes. I mean, if you look at the extent of the nine and a half percent that we're using there. Um, picking that up in other areas, um, just the way its topography is, kind of like going down the middle of the site, there's kind of a ridge. Like you're, you're really not getting any benefit. Eh, eh, again, that lower road is really where that diving is occurring. And we just, we need that length to transition that vertical amount, if that makes sense, so. Um, yeah, I mean, I I get what you're saying. I think we have, uh, I think this is, you know, again, fully baked. I think that we come into a project, you know. Wanting the same thing that, I think we all have the same goals, uh. Um, you know, we don't come in asking or or wanting steep grades. I think, you know, our previous iterations have some flatter grades and we just noticed, hey, this. This isn't constructible, um. So I I think we have made some of those considerations. And again, I think we have have done our best to limit, um. You know, the nine and a half percent slopes to to the areas that are that are most, um. Mo- most necessary, you know, for the project.
My one thought is, uh, like question, but. You mentioned. In other projects showing accessible routes to. Various things, I I think, and and. Kind of came up before. I just think, you know, talking about accessibility and really that that seems to be for me especially. Especially it's like the most important aspect of of this waiver or grant or not. Um, would be to see those roots, you know, like if you're going to ask for a nine and a half percent slope, how can somebody navigate the site? To get around that, uh. Potential, um, hurdle, you know. Navigation, you know, if I was, you know, a person's in a wheelchair or what have you. You know, it sounds like. There's these different percentages being thrown out. Generally, it seems like that max eight point three percent. You know, it's something that you could. Designer. Uh, not necessarily the road.
I mean. You mean, if you look at the kind of the sidewalk network here that we have proposed. I mean, you can kind of draw a blue line on all the sidewalks. I mean, I and and I I hate to. Yeah, I'm not trying to nitpick on like the letter of the law, but I mean, there is a standard and and we are meeting that standard. Um, for for Pro Ag, for ADA compliance. I mean, again, eh, if if we're going to say that. Hey, we'd like for you to be a little less steep than nine and a half percent. I mean, again, eight percent. Um, it is is no more compliant than than nine and a half percent on these streets, but I mean, to your point. I mean, a- any of these sidewalks meets, uh, would meet Pro Ag, would meet the leading accessibility standards and and that's what.
Like suggesting, uh, please, I kind of establish a best practice percentage that. You know, to Duncan's point is maybe exceeds. Pro Ag. And then you'd show. Okay, along the site, maybe it doesn't have to follow a sidewalk. Maybe there's kind of a roundabout way that. Person could. And that's just.
Yeah, I I I hear what you're saying. Yeah, I I I understand.
Yeah, it just seemed like, you know, if you're asking for a waiver, then my. Consider how you could like. Show how slightly actually.
Your response to that one?
Yeah, no, I mean, I I I hear what you're saying. I understand. I mean, what we can. Um. Eh, to to your point, I mean, the the. The site plan design process, review process that will undoubtedly go through through the next, you know. Probably twelve months is is going to, uh, be working with engineering to further refine. They're going to want to see that all of these regs are met, that you are providing acceptable. Um, pedestrian access or ADA compliant, Pro Ag compliant. Um, access, um, throughout the site. And if we don't, you know, we 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 don't get an approved site plan, so tho- those. Those things are are are. Standards that we are held to just as part of the site plan review process. And you know, eh, eh, to your point, I mean, some of these spaces, for instance, like the green spaces. Um, a lot of them right now are going to pass as spaces, so there there could be some programming moving forward where we do have some of those. Uh, you making those places, right, with some winding. Um, winding sidewalks with courtyards or or, you know, you name it, some of those things. Um, um, you know, again, are are being developed now with our landscape architecture team and our architect, but. Uh, so you'll you'll see, I think, some of that come to life. Uh, as a plan progresses. I I know that doesn't answer your your question in the immediate, but I I. Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I I get it.
With can can you, uh, literally, you know, for that, uh, that bottom road, I think it's Road C, Road C, like. Pro wagon lets you have any sidewalk grade that's, you know, as deep as the the real grade. Can you make that sidewalk? Uh, less steep, um, such that like it gets further above the the road as you go further down? Um, in order to make the actual pass.
The answer is no. If you did that, you would be held to five percent. Um, so if you.
It would have to be exactly parallel.
Exactly. So if you if you if you start to flatten that sidewalk grade out, you start to manipulate that such that it's not running parallel. To the road. Then you are held to that five percent. I mean, and you're coming out of the ground pretty high. I you know, maybe you can navigate that with a series of ramps, but. Um, man, that's gonna be pretty cumbersome. You're gonna have some walls and ramps and switchbacks and, um. I again, I think there's an engineering solution for everything. It's just I I don't think that that one. Um, you know, in in this instance, is 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 practical.
More like the standard where. The sidewalk is accidentally a foot above the road. And so there's like a little. Hey, there are planting area to.
Well, I guess what I'm saying, you know, as the road continues to go down at nine and a half percent. And your sidewalk's at five percent. I mean, you end up.
Every hundred feet, you're gonna be a foot and a half higher.
Right.
So so if you start at one end of Road C, by the time you get down to the end, you're four to five feet above the road.
Yeah, and then you get and you kind of have a a wall, right, where your curb is railing, um. Uh, yeah, I I don't think that that.
We get stuff, how did we start at the eight percent? I mean, maybe I should ask this up for him because it seems like that's not really achieving anything. Except for that it was what was stated in the original application materials.
The the eight percent, as Missy I think stated in the pre-meeting, maybe, um. The the eight percent grade in the city code has been there. For I don't know how many years. I don't know exactly why they they picked that percentage. Um, and obviously, as as Clint had noted, and I think in my response to Rory, th- there are plenty of streets in the city that exceed that. Um. Uh, again, it's, you know. A- ADA is only like really been, you know, a thing since the early nineties, like, you know. Is is really when it came into, you know, the some of the the main accessibility concerns. Um, and the pro ag has not actually officially been, um, accepted even yet. It's still in, um. It's it's non, non-accepted state. Um. So ADA is an ever-evolving thing. So again, I don't know exactly where the eight percent came from. Um. And as far as the the city code, like our our. We've got city code and we've got the standards and design manual. Um, and Clint did point out correctly, our stairs and design manual allows for ten percent max, which. Our city code allows for ten percent max. It's just says it's eight percent and up to ten with a waiver. Um. So the the eight percent, again, I don't know initially where it got into the code. Um, the. Clint, again, he he said it correctly, that, you know, the the ramps are eight percent. The ADA access for sidewalks is five percent. ADA access for trail systems is eight percent though, or the eight point three three percent. Um, so again, as as engineering staff, like that's, that's the highest. Um, that's allowable, um, percentage that's actually, you know, stated other than you can meet. A road grade. Um, and so that's kind of, you know, where we can accomplish that. That's what we're, you know, it's, it might not meet an an off-site sidewalk ADA accessibility. Um, but it would meet a trail system accessibility guideline, um, and and we feel that, you know, that's. It's it's definitely achievable, um. With some engineering, um, on the site. And so that that's, again, that's why we denied the waiver.
So. Um. Yeah, understanding Commissioner Solz, Solzberg's query on accessibility, you know, let's define what accessibility really is here and and. And and it seems that with this eight percent. Mr. Russell's point is that, in your explanation of that, it's almost like we're being subjected to peer pressure from dead people, right? I mean. We don't know why why does success? I don't know, because it's been there for, you know, forty years. Well, okay, well. You know, the. Our gala wrote that in here. Um, and I say that as a recovering historian myself. Um, but to also to Commissioner Solsonberg, Solberg's point on this lower right-hand corner and in your exhibit B. You present sort of two options. Right? Uh, option, option one is build a higher retaining wall and deal with the consequences that. Number two is you bleed over into the into the hundred-year flood plain and you have to deal with that with either. I mean, I imagine that that's a a bit of a nightmare and. Even if you. The solutions to that sound like there. Is there, but dealing with that corner, which I think. Uh, like at least a couple of us have said, who cares how steep that end of that road is really relative to the rest of it? Is there a split the baby option? Or is tho- are those really sort of? We can do one, we can do the other, we can't sort of.
Well, again, I mean, you know, per city code, I mean, even if we took that end section and took it from nine and a half percent to ten percent. You're picking up half percent over. Probably fifty feet. So you, what do you, what do you gain in there, um? You know, a couple of feet at most, um.
Is there a functional use for that? Piece?
Turnaround for for emergency access.
So you have the cul-de-sac.
Well, so the call guy, so the cul-de-sac is substandard. As I understand it, so like, if if you look at the emergency access.
Okay.
Or the emergency, um, apparatus that that.
Okay.
The city wants to turn around and I understand it, I mean, but a very large apparatus. Um, so what we have there is they can do a T-type turnaround.
Okay.
Um, we we coordinated that with the city fire chief. I think we have some, you know, some more details to work out with them, but that's, that's how we arrived at that, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we could do without it too.
Yeah, there's no other option for trying to stick that that ability somewhere else.
Well, but the fire truck doesn't care about the grade, right? Like, it's just.
No, no, just just geographically about, you know, or no, I'm kind of horizontally being able to do it. A K turn or a three-point turn. Uh, at at intersection at the end, that's that's kind of why that extension is. Now, I mean, I guess if the grade got really excessive, you know, they they might say, hey, this thing's a thirty percent or like, I don't know, you know, but that we're not.
Phenomenon at Monticello, we call the runaway grandma.
Oh, no.
Effect, you know, where wheelchairs are just flying down hills. So I think like you maybe don't want that careening off into the.
Yeah, sure.
Taming wall.
Well, and especially if you're maintaining, if we did settle on a eight percent for the rest of the street, you don't want too much of a change. In grade for that little stub either, or else, you know, somebody's.
All right, that 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 answers some of my questions, actually. Um, I have questions for staff. Uh, I understand we can say yes, I understand we can say no. Can we understand maybe if only in addition to, can we get wacky with it? Sorry, can you? Can we offer conditional, can we offer amendments? Can we offer, you know, hedging and, you know, wishful thinking?
I don't know. Um. I mean. I think Missy had said this is the first time we've actually had a a grade waiver in the city. Um, they've either. We've either not needed them or they've been granted. Um.
Or grade waiver appeal, right?
Right, yeah, I'm sorry, grade waiver appeal. Um. So. I guess the question is, is what are you proposing? I mean, I I'd be happy to discuss them with you and see if they're practical or not, but. Without knowing that, I don't know how to answer your question.
Can we require landings on steep, uh, steep grades?
For the sidewalks? I think that would be difficult.
You'd be going against that road.
Right.
You'd run up against that problem.
Yeah.
Can we say? This is required. Um, that, you know, to to meet, uh, great requirements, can we say that this is required to meet great requirements? Unless there's access up here. From this building. Uh, and exempt this in this. Could that be something we said? Ooh.
I believe that that could be something that's said.
Okay, that's exciting. So I I agree with Mr. Stoltenberg's point that some of these are more important than others for ADA. Um.
I also don't understand still if there is a way in which the applicant can show. Maybe they don't have to show. I'm still confused, like. Um. If if there's, uh. You you know, pa- sidewalks that someone could navigate. Through the site or two major features like scribbling, presumably to like. Get a bus or something, you know, something in the future. How how someone would navigate the site? Not have to use those slopes. However, I'm not sure that that's even. Relevant since an eight percent grade isn't achieving accessibility. I mean, I guess I just don't understand what we're trying to.
It, like I said, that's where I started off. There's there's different levels of accessibility. So there's a like a building accessibility. There's the right-of-way, or there's a sidewalk outside of a building. Um, and then there's the right-of-way. The right-of-way is the least restrictive of all of those. Um. Which is why we're trying to hold at least to an accessible trail standard, um, for the sidewalk. So that's, you know. Again, it will it, would it meet an interior building steepness grade? No. Um.
So the federal government. Doesn't. Care, they'll let us go up to fifteen, right? Um, and so it's only our ordinance that says. Up to eight and up to ten with a waiver. Um. For for that standalone sidewalk thing, is that the federal government says for standalone sidewalk, it has to be five?
Five percent max longitudinal slope unless it's a ramp, which can go up to eight point three three.
Even in the public right of way.
And two percent cross slope, like there's there's a bunch of stipulations.
If I may, real quick, jump in here because something was mentioned about landings, which I wanted to add as well. So to talk, talk about the private ADA. You can have a five percent sidewalk as soon as it goes above five percent. Since five point zero one percent, it's a ramp. So you can't go higher than eight point three three percent at all with a ramp on private property. And if you have eight point three three percent, you can only rise six inches. So you can only go. Six feet, eight feet. Um. With.
But jet, jet, sorry, interrupt. I I agree with everything you just said. Excited, wanted to make one highlight point. Once you get above a half a foot of vertical rise. That kicks in the need for railing.
That's right.
Landing, so you. It's just. It kicks you over into into.
And then it's fifty or a hundred feet before you need a landing, some somewhere around there, I believe.
Yeah, I think it's thirty-two feet, but you still, you need a handrail. So under ADA, the original ADA guidelines, which comes from the Department of Justice or the Access Board. It doesn't, the only thing that it references is pro ag is that you don't actually need handrails. Because if you looked at ADA and looked at this road to meet the original intent of ADA on private property, the entire sidewalk, you need to have handrails. Since obviously that violates basic street furniture practices, utilities, all those things, the original ADA excluded that. So the point that should not be lost here is that. Um. As designers, uh, they call it, uh, uniformed design, I think, these days. We should, we should all be striving to make things as accessible as possible. It's not necessarily the case that just because you exceed five percent and go to five point two percent that that's equivalent to ten percent. This is not about convenience for able-bodied people. It's about, um, equity and federal regulations guiding that. It is very confusing. Um, but it it, and furthermore, which which is why I chimed in here. The standards and sign manual says should at all intersections, there should be fifty feet of landing. For two percent. And that's again, so that we don't get a situation where you have. Extremely steep roads coming together and having ramps that are totally outside of. Uh, a reason was to expect somebody with actual disability to navigate that. Um, that's not conveyed on here. That is in the code as a should. We're gonna certainly encourage that and that would be something. Um, the last sidewalk waiver we we gave, uh, that Brendan referenced was because they achieved full compliance at the intersections. Um, with cross slopes and the landing. So staff would prefer. That the safety be focused at the intersections where the pedestrians interface with traffic. Um, so that that is something that's in the code and that we would like to see. Those details don't get done till even after this waiver is entertained with final plans.
Thank you, Mr. Justin.
So those details are are in the site plan and they're in the, uh, they're in the waiver packet. Um, you'll notice a series of, um, I think it's at least two maybe profiles. That's a profile of these street crossings, um, where we are meeting. So so what what we're tasked to do is is design a project that that, you know, try to meet the goal of comprehensive plan. Achieves, uh, you know, all the goals that we arrived at with this PUD. Um, and and taking into account community welfare, things of that nature, but also we have. We have guidelines we have to follow and like, they they can't be moving around, like, so we. We are meeting the the pedestrian and 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 highway and street guidelines at at every point. Um, likewise with the with the intersections, you know, we're meeting the stipulation, um. You know, I think if you guys saw the feedback in the PC packet with the email correspondence back and forth. What we keep hearing from the city is you gotta meet pro ag, you gotta meet pro ag, you gotta meet pro ag. We're hearing that consistently from. From city engineering, it's all over that email correspondence. And we are. So now we're demonstrating pro ag and they're like, well. You know, it could be better. Well, well, maybe, but I mean, you got, you know, we have. We have standards that we're meeting and standards that we're being held to and and asked to being held to. And we're meeting those. Again, you can see with this exhibit that we are flattening out. At each of these intersections, we we profiled those, we designed those in such a way. To be compliant with the pro ag standards, like to be clear. Um, tho- those. Those landings i- in in compliance with pro ag standards are. Are taking place, they are occurring.
Not to be argumentative, but. Eight percent has been the standard since the PUD, like that is, we we haven't changed that.
Nineteen ninety-three. Found it.
Was when, was when the city.
Nineteen ninety-three, uh, it was ten and the planning commission could allow an excess of ten. Nineteen ninety-three, we changed the standard to eight and the planning commission could allow eight to ten.
Yeah.
Well, that that's why we're here for a waiver. I mean, I I I we 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 recognize that. Um, again, we didn't come out of the gate with a PUD design of of doing a, uh, you know. Fi- final deep dive, hundreds of man-hours on the engineering side of things. To to kind of, to to open up. Uh, these sort of things, understand the earthworks, understand. Uh, utilities, road placement, road grades, roads, that that, you know, everything that comes with final engineering. Again, that's what's informed us here. You know, it wasn't our intent at any point to do some sort of bait and switch and say, hey. You know, we're getting to be PUD plan approved and then ha, we got you, we're going nine and a half percent. That's not the intent.
That's got you up. Um, NACDO, does NACDO have any, have anything on this?
Uh, not really, not for the the steepness.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, we 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 understand coming into the PUD process that that a waiver was needed to go over eight percent. I mean, it's it's. We're we're, we are in a hilly, uh, city. I mean, these these sort of, uh, steep roads again are are. Very numerous, they're they're implemented all over the place. Um, in the city, there's lots of precedent for them. Um, they they seem to function, uh, just fine. We did our best, again, as you can see with our design.
I put you up again. Mr. Payne, um, questions for the applicant?
None.
Thank you. I'd like to close, uh, hearing from the applicant at this time. Um. What do we do with this mess? Where are we?
Well, we either decided to grant the waiver or we signed not to.
Do you have a preference?
I, um. I like where you're going with, you know, the modifications, but I, the modifications would be so freaking complicated that I don't think that we are qualified to help them think there's modifications. I, um, as the, uh, wave was currently, um. Currently is structured, the wave request, I cannot support it. I would love to. Find where to have these guys talk about some modifications that would make it work and 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 and. And take a look at with the modifications. But again, I don't think we're qualified to, look, I'm not qualified, maybe Rory is. We we had five or six different good ideas. Especially, you know, the the stuff over there we don't care about, I mean, there's all kinds of good ideas, but I would love to have the. Professor's think about what the modifications ought to be and.
Is that a process possibility? Could we defer?
Deferring a. Appeal.
Maybe a peel. With.
Re-present.
Re-present, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I I. I don't believe that there are any limitations on that. The the code doesn't get too much into detail, except to say that this is the appealing body.
So, I mean, I I agree that I don't think we should engineer the. Any mitigations here, right? Like by just looking at a. Site plan, but, um. This is a preliminary site plan, right? So I I think maybe there's a possibility to say, if we think that. In general, a waiver may be good for the reasons in our standards of review. That we could make some encouragements, um, to say something like. Generally, like, please make every effort to make. You know, the roads north of Road D.
You know, the roads north of Road D uh not or like, you know. A- as slow a slope as possible um as they go forward.
They got like something more than please make every effort.
You will.
I'm inclined to agree because the the way it's written, it's it's, you know, it's eight percent up to ten. Is allowable and I can't really still understand why we're stuck on eight except for that that adheres to a trail standard, which this isn't a trail. Um, so I don't know like on what grounds we're standing to deny. Really, other than we just don't create about it not being as. Gentle of a slope, but it's still not accessible. So we could like. I mean, if you know, tell me if I'm wrong, I just I just I'm not understanding what eight versus nine point something really is doing at the end of the day.
But to the to that end, Commissioner Felsberg, you had a um a back and forth to staff and there were some examples provided of street grades. I don't have access to this moment. Can you pull that?
Yeah, uh, and and yeah, like, and I've got a question. I've got a specific question about one of them. Um, just for my own. And that's the uh.
Six street, six street to Avon on on Lemon Avenue. What's that?
Seven point eight.
That's an eight percent. All right.
Rose Hill next to Burley is the one that he said is exactly eight.
Ten.
Next to Burley.
Oh, my bad. Yes, I was.
One item that I'm asking about is because I actually go over that every single day. And that's seven point eight. Um, I mean, I think that in in one sense, my amateurish, you know. Cranking that up that in the in my scooter every day. Um, that seven point eight is a steep hill. That's a that's a steep hill. That takes me from twenty-six miles an hour to eighteen. If I was twenty pounds lighter, maybe it wouldn't, but it does. Uh. Okay, that's 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 helpful for me to visualize that. That's. Yeah, that and I don't know if you if you can pull that up in your head, but that's as you exit the X complex and you go up Lemon Avenue towards. Avon Street. That's seven point eight.
Eight eight percent is a it's deep. That's.
Well, I think someone would say that anything above five is, and that's why there are. You know.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess in in one sense, we're talking about the accessibility issue and the guidelines are what the guidelines are. We're second, third, and fourth guessing these guidelines, which in some respects. Uh, may be uh exquisitely robust and in others uh respects. Maybe just a a a horrible cluster. That's been put together to try to make sense of something that's not sensible. So I I'm with you in that. All right, we're talking about eight percent versus nine and a half percent versus a set of guidelines. Eight percent, eight percent stinks.
Mr. Choice.
Well, I'm just gonna actually agree. Um, yeah, with what you and this um order are saying, it's um. I mean, eighty already is pretty steep. Um, and I think I would care more about this if this was a a mixed-use project. Um, but you know, you've got to trek all the way up Stribling to the corner of JPA and Fontaine to. Find anything commercial related that you'd be able to go to. Um, there's no way you'd be able to go down to the Fontaine Research Park because that's a really steep hill. Um, so it's it's a purely residential development out in the corner of nowhere. That is designed for cars. It unfortunately, I think we've we've kind of set that up, so the guideline, the. You know, FHA, fair housing assumes that you can use an auto automobile to get. To a accessible location. Um, I think it's unfortunate, but it is um. Yeah, I mean, and and what we need is a work session where we we all take a wheelchair out to an eight percent slope and try and go up it.
Absolutely, and and.
Can't do that in time.
Yeah, I mean, I I I think you're right that this that we're talking about walkability and accessibility and really that, you know. Eight percent is car design. I mean, if you're in everything's at eight percent, that's it. Well, it's walkable for some. Yeah, it's walkable for some people.
ADA is not just wheelchair.
Yeah, it's walkable for some people.
Yeah, my take is um, and I walked. Bunch of these grades, including right before this meeting, which is slightly late. Uh, he'll suck. You know, if if it were totally up to me with no constraints, like. Say we pick whatever the average elevation of the city is and flatten all of them. Uh, I'll drive the bulldozer. Um. So there there'll be trees now. Um, so I I think though, um. And and yeah, like, you know, eight percent, uh, if you go to the bottom of X, right, you turn left. It's eight percent, you turn right, it's nine and a half percent. Uh, they're both really unpleasant. Uh, the nine and a half percent is definitely. Slightly more unpleasant. Maybe that's because I did it second and was already winded. Um, but uh, I I think you. You have to weigh the harm that that extra one and a half percent grade does. You know, for a hundred years uh to the people who will be affected it. Because they live at the bottom of this development against um. The harm that would be done by bringing a thousand dump trucks down Stribling. Which is, I think, the real, like, according to our standard review, if there's one of them that seems compounding to me, it's that. You know, like the health and safety effects of of having to do that, right? Um, and. Since it sounds like this is all going to be done at the very first stage of this project. We won't have a sidewalk done at that point, which means everyone. Who walks or rolls down Stribling uh is in the street and now has to navigate it with these dump trucks um. And to me, that. Say again?
For a very discreet period of time.
True.
Fifty-nine hundred years, but yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's true. Yeah, it's not for a hundred years. Um, but it's, you know. While a dump truck's passing you, it's gonna feel a lot worse, I think. Um, a- and so I. I lean towards uh approving the waiver um with a shall uh do everything possible um so that. The parts of the site that are up the hill um. And and in particular, access to the apartment buildings um is as. Uh, low asleep a slope as can be achieved um as they move to the final site plan phase. Um, I don't know if that's the wording, but like.
Is that a motion?
Again, uh, yeah, um. Like, I I I don't worry quite as much about the people who live in the three-story townhomes. Um, unless they're gonna have elevators, like, so you know, row, but I'm assuming they're not. Um.
They made their choice.
I do worry about people in the apartments.
Well, I think we should worry about all of our constituents and have a responsibility for them, not just keep living where.
Sure, but they're gonna have to walk up the stairs in their house, probably. Um, you know, and if we have to go back, if we could go back for years, I would say, maybe I did say, put the apartments at the top of the hill because that's. Then you have all those people that much closer to stuff. But we didn't do that and they don't want to do that and there are probably other harms that.
You uh, you're gonna ramble on? Are you gonna make a?
You want me to make a motion? I'm on profiles. I am confused with the difference between two and three.
Um, because number is three uh. Pulling out the different.
Thought about it and thought about it. What wouldn't these be the waiver?
I'm talking about.
Indicate all four.
Oh, I see, like.
Well, we should do that wheelchair test.
Yeah, I uh. Almost borrowed a wheelchair this weekend. Um, do that, but then I did too much research on three notched. Um. I uh. I moved to approve the waiver uh that would allow. Those streets identified in the applicant's waiver request to exceed eight percent, uh but not more than ten percent grade. Uh, with the condition that the applicant shall make every effort uh to make. The uphill segments of roads, particularly north of Road D. Um, as well as sidewalks leading to the two apartment buildings. Um, as shallow a grade as possible.
Practicable?
Practicable uh when proceeding to final site plan.
Yeah, don't tell, don't give an engineer a possible.
Uh, Mr. Tucker, is that making sense?
I'm not sure how we're going to enforce that.
Do you have ideas on how we could?
Probably won't, right?
But I mean. My, I mean, obviously, my idea of practicable and Clint's idea of practicable as of right now are are different, so.
I say while maintaining.
I mean, if you want to put a percentage on there, then that's much more uh, you know. Enforceable, like, than, you know, when we're reviewing it, we have a number that we're trying to hit.
I like what you just said about the film.
I would say while maintaining filter balance um.
To to what percent?
What percent?
Cause I I'll just, I'll just say in general, most sites, a- as he said, like, are going to have export. Um, that's that's the normal practice. Um, so the fact that this site is. Close to balancing is somewhat rare. Um, usually want to have some export because. You're going to have to bring in road base, um gravel and that kind of stuff that anyway. Um, that is coming in from off of site. So normally you have to cut down some export that out so you can bring in the proper material. Um, so I I again, I I don't have a number. For you to say, you know, it it should be within X percent um of balancing. If I I I don't know how, I don't know how to write that that for you.
If I may, I mean, my, our goal always is to make the site balance. That's what we're tasked with. Um, from every developer of any municipality, we we do we do projects in in mostly municipalities for whoever the client may be, it's always. To get the site to balance. I mean, that that's not always achievable, but a site this size, we would expect to be able to balance. Um, on some of the postage stamp sites where you don't have a lot of room to 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 do the grade like perhaps, but I mean, again, that. It's just to say that the goal, the goal is is a a straight balance, zero.
Yeah, I mean.
It's not really a lot of push and pull if they're not bringing in more fill, you know, what are we?
Well, they could, they could reconfigure the slopes in the site, right? They could, they could take that top rate and, you know. Put that in a pit. I don't know how that works for hydrology or whatever other constraints there are. Um, and you know, shove some of that dirt back up, right? Um, I don't know. I'm not a civil engineer. Um, I don't think anyone here is.
You said there was an eighteen hundred number in there, right? That they said that, so the balance within that range. So it makes sense. So it could be between.
We we can't enforce any of that.
Staff can't enforce cutter fill numbers. Those are generally placed by the engineer in a plan as an estimate only in general practice. Because they're not costing these things. They're not doing the undercut or the unsuitable fills. Or any of the geo testing that goes into those sorts of things. That's an estimate. The numbers Clint was talking about, you know, compression and institute soil versus uh excavated soil, those are. Huge estimates. Um, and staff has no way to check those numbers.
Great.
Why don't you just make the motion without the, you know, friendly s- uh suggestions?
Yeah, I mean, I I think what I was doing originally for the motion, it was. Probably gonna we'll put the word please in there, but it it's almost intended as a please, right? Like. Sad is not gonna be able to enforce that sort of thing. Um, it's, hey, the planning commission in giving you this waiver that you're asking for. Would really like you to try as hard as you can uh to make it so there's a a shallow. Possibly as close to eight percent as you can pathway to get to the front door of the apartment building.
Comes with a this. Only condition.
Want to take another swing in it?
I I'm, oh, I will second that as a please.
I hear a second.
What did you say?
That's right. It's we're acknowledging that. You know, we're not making Jack and Brennan.
I think if any. More confusing for 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 staff to have a.
I think you.
Well, it's not, but it's not, I mean, staff can't enforce it. It was basically, it's it's something for the applicant.
So what put it in?
And then do your pretty please.
Yeah.
Cause the the, you know, the the motion we can understand, we can enforce. The pretty pleases we can't remember.
This is why Jeff Warner hates me. The BAR does this to him all the time. Wait, wait, his motion.
Yeah, you wanna, yeah.
Uh, you guys want me to reskip the motion with no additions?
Yes, please.
Well, I lost it.
I'm not making it a simple motion.
I moved to approve the waiver that would allow these streets, identi- those streets identifying the applicant's waiver request to exceed eight percent, but not more than ten percent.
I hear a motion in a second. Discussion on this item.
Um. Had we, had we considered the uh. Column A and column B option that is presented. Yes, we can let it happen here, but not there. Cause we've already been harping on that corner that apparently nobody but the fire department wants.
I mean, I think, like, I would agree that the. The two on the left are the most important to get rid of the extent you can, but I don't know how we can pick and choose segments without.
Knocking everything you have here.
Yeah.
Something just as much as denial.
Yes.
What was the significant ones?
And.
If I may, I I mean, staff would rather have as many compliant or you. A- as many at eighty per- percent as we can, so, you know. If you, I I agree with you that the ones to the left of Road D. Uh, to get pedestrian access up to Morgan Court and to Stribling Avenue are the most.
See, I'd almost say the Morgan Court one, like if you were to make the whatever road that is. Um, if you could get me those those. Left-right segments to be eight percent and the up-down wasn't. I wouldn't be as worried about that because you can use the left road up-down. And Morgan Court has that twelve percent at the top anyway, so if you're going up there, it doesn't really help you that much.
Uh, as a counterargument, if you tell a disabled person that they can traverse one non-compliant or two non-compliant. Which do you think they're gonna pick?
Yeah, but then it gets you in a path that doesn't have any non-compliance.
I was just saying, if if they're trying to visit someone on Morgan Court and they were trying to walk there.
True.
You know, if they can only have to do the one at the end of Morgan Court that's only a hundred feet long. As opposed to multiple ones, you know, it's gonna be preferable. So again. More compliance is always better than less compliance, even if it's not fully compliant.
Math math question. Um, could this become an accessible access? Off-street and not have to worry about this, give one.
Well, there's a giant ridge to the left of that park.
For sure.
But you could get out to the top, maybe. I don't know. I'm seeing.
Uh, with without going through the engineering, I I don't, I don't have a bad answer for you.
It was, I think it would be five percent. It would have to be five percent because it's.
At that that point, yes.
As that's harder, but you've got a lot more land to do it.
But that still doesn't get you from the apartment buildings up to that.
If the apartment buildings can get to the intersection, then they can get there.
Yeah, they're still walking along. They're still traveling a sidewalk.
It it, yeah, it depends on exactly where those entrances are along along the.
Is it, we're seeing if this is, it it sounds like it might fail, but I mean, or.
I don't know that.
Well, let's find out.
Uh, I think we're maybe, we're, wait, what will fail?
Your motion.
Oh, my motion. I don't, well, I I think if if we can, if I can figure out a reasonable thing to do that that is short of giving them the waiver entirely. I'm maybe open to it. I just don't know that we can do that as amateur engineers looking at. Uh, graphical lines on a piece of paper. Um. So.
Any any more discussion on this motion?
Was there a second?
Oh, there was a second from Mr. Roswell.
Yeah, I still don't know what I'm thinking.
Chris, would you please call her?
Mr. Short.
Uh, yes, for the waiver.
Mr. Geronzio.
Uh, I.
Mr. Stoltenberg.
Hi.
Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Solis.
Hi. Do a lot of pretty please? Is it worth doing?
Want a resolution?
Yeah. The planning commission does here for it.
Well, really whereby, I mean, I I think we articulated that pretty well. Well, I would say articulate. I think we expressed that.
And also, thank you to staff for for, you know. And also thank you to staff for, for, you know, working really hard and bringing these, um, I don't know, delinquencies within the, the code for attention, because, um, it's not working for us. We should do better.
Yeah, and I thank you to staff for working as hard as you can to make improvements to the city as accessible to everybody as you can, even though we just undid some of that.
Well, it's not exist.
You know, geography is geography.
Yeah. I would entertain, uh, an additional motion at this time?
Uh, yes, sir.
Please.
I suggest that, uh, I move that we put our paper mache heads on our, on our beds, climb to the roof, grab our makeshift rafts and get down into San Francisco Bay. It's time to escape from trash.
Do I second all this?
That bungled motion to a term.
Can we get a thumbs? Let's get thumbs. Good night, all. Thank you very much.